Welcome everyone to the April 5th, 2023, Meeting of Council. It's good to see a number of people here this evening and because we do have full council chambers, I want to take a moment to read the Emergency Evacuation Notice. In case of an emergency, we are to take one of two exits. The door you came in and the door to my left. We have fronts of the Green Street Garage near the number of columns. Those with restricted mobility in the event of fire, best move one of the stairwells and first responders will arrive. In the event of a lockdown, as the killer help others in the roof, but only if you can do so safely. But our primary objective always is to get out and ensure the safety of that room. We want you to be aware of your surroundings and offer help when it comes to your own detriment as you are your own best counselor. So thank you for your attendance as I read that Emergency Evacuation Notice. Once again, calling to order, the April 5th Meeting of Council. Any changes to the agenda other than those that were distributed in the revised agenda? None. I do want to recognize as we start tonight's Council meeting that many people tonight will be celebrating the first Seder of Passover. I want to recognize that many people will be celebrating each weekend. So everyone who does observe these holidays, wishing happy Monday. I also want to mention that we will be honoring a community member who has contributed significantly to our community in just a few moments. Before that, however, as we start, I also want to recognize the passing of someone who also has contributed significantly to our community. That is Irene Scott. Irene has been a friend, a mentor, a colleague for many people in Ithaca and in Thompson County and across the state. Probably nationally. So her passing recently has been a loss for our community. And the family will be holding a celebration in May and it will be a celebration to honor both Peter and Irene Scott. All right, thank you. First on our agenda is reports of municipal officials. And we are so fortunate to have two of our colleagues with us. So I'll first turn it over and invite Supervisor Ron Howell from the town to come up and address the problem.
Very much. Good evening. So our goal is to be before this board three or four times a year. Just remember, it's a reciprocal relationship. So you can have folks come to the Town Board a few times here as well to give us updates. So I'm here to give you a few updates on what I call the cross arm around the city. There are many, many ways that we coordinate and work together involving both our elected representatives and staff. In the past and present, we've shared information on telecommunications. The past year long, hopefully we'll be looking at our law in June. We're sharing information, we have been sharing information on both the rentals. We've already passed the law, I believe that we're still in the process. So we love the community relationship with the town. More recently, we're looking at ways to reduce the speed on the app, to ways to mitigate measures to increase safety for all. So I know the city is taking more proactive stuff than the town is right now, but we are sitting in, I think even in a meeting that needs to be approved before it's done. And of course, the town has been very involved in conversations related to the staffing issues, the area-based water treatment facility. So we hope to find solutions to some of those. I will say that those of us from the town who got to see the $1.7 million electric fire truck were very proud. But that's not to say that we're ready to commit funds to that. But it was pretty awesome. I hope that many of you got to see it. Other brief updates, we have a new sustainability planner. Our sustainability planner works very closely with the city. Her name is Hillary Sportwood. I don't think many folks will know her, even though she is living locally right now. Nick Goldsmith, I think you know, is now working at the park. We're going to be updating our transportation plan. The last time it was updated was 2007. So it's time as we look at sidewalks, like a little jump, pedestrian and bike safety issues. The inlet valley, we have passed a new overlay zone for the inlet valley in community parks. So we want to start being more proactive about promoting economic development. The kind of economic development that will be needed to that area in the way that we want it to be. So stay tuned on that. Some of you may be invited to brainstorm as we think about how to be more proactive. You're all invited to an event that we're doing at Tullo Park on May 6th. This is to add additional layers of meaning to the land of Uco for the park and recognizing the Dakahono and the Dantahon. I propose the two specific initiatives. So the city and the town hopefully will have a joint historic preservation ordinance. And in Ithaca Landmark Preservation Commission that covers both the city and the town. There was members of your ILTC with members of the town of Ithaca worked on a draft of two vice draft ordinance in commission back in 2021. They were given to the town and the city. So we're ready, we're waiting for the city to look forward to being able to move forward on that project. And then lastly, something that we've been working on with the city for forever is community choice aggregation, which had to do with block energy purchasing. A great deal of teamwork has happened over the past two years. We expect the implementation plans for more power to come before both City Council and Town Board this spring. As you may recall, we're taking a pretty innovative approach to that. If you know the lingo, it's 3.0, CCA, as opposed to 1.0 or 2.0. I don't go into the details here, but we have spent a lot of time and energy on that. We are having fun coming up with a name. The public is going to have to start thinking about this. Community choice aggregation isn't going to really mean anything to them. So we're coming up with a name to brand it specifically for this locality. So I think we're down to two voices. So staying on that. We're also in the process of developing a video because most of the general public won't know what CCA is. So we want to just start getting whatever branding term we're going to use out in the public side to pave the way for a pretty robust education outreach initiative. So again, that's been a long, ongoing project working together. We look forward to hopefully both passing the information. So any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Monk.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you so much.
And remember, you're welcome to come to the town.
And I also would like to bring up legislator Veronica Hiller, who has joined us in the past. I'm a legislator who's given the vote.
Hello, thank you. Good to see you all. I have seven things. We'll try to be quick. In the spirit of continuity, we also hired a new staff person, county historian Laura Johnson Kelly, who is excited to be a resource for all of us, including you all. The continuity piece is that she was the historian for the county of Ithaca for over a day. The Community Recovery Fund is once again allocating money, not additional money, but the second wind project is not going forward. So we have another $500,000 to allocate. We're not accepting any new applications, but are going through a process of like choosing from what is left on the list. And if you want the details, ask me later or look up one of our most recent couple meetings. The end decision will likely be made in May. And this is just for information. We're not encouraging lobbying on these points. I think last night when George was over at our house, or not house, but you know, the GIV program was brought up, the gun. What is it? The gun involved violence.
Federal money.
Yeah, federal money to law enforcement offices to try to avoid gun violence. And I know that you said that IPD wasn't able to participate in that, which is unfortunate. But I wanted to bring forth that the county, Development County Partners, our DNA probation office and Sheriff's Office are wanting to go full scheme ahead with this. And they're working on what that can look like without the municipal police force involved. I think you're interested in saying in contact around that. I know you all got, as we did, information about the FEMA flood insurance risk map updates. And just one thing to highlight is that there's going to be another open house locally about that at the end of April. I think the date is not set yet. And one of the people in our planning office says, just as a timeline preview, that the final maps wouldn't be like totally finalized until a year and a half or two years from now likely. So they're still trying to do things about that. Obviously it's complicated. We announced at our meeting a couple of weeks ago that August 6th is now celebrating Democracy Day in Thompson County. So look out for events there. And I would like to remind everyone that the I Voted sticker contest submissions, this is for people in grades nine through 12, are due May 1st. And I really want ours to be cooler than Ulster County's. I'm bringing this up any chance I get. Okay, two more things. The Center of Government Project that we have been working on for a long time and likely a long time to come, that you may be interested, this is the city, got, no more decisions were made, but Lisa Holmes, our county administrator, gave an update on kind of the history of this process from 2019 to now and what decisions might look like going forward at our meeting last night. I think it was a really helpful summary. So if you're interested on the YouTube, it starts around the one hour 18 minute mark and goes for about an hour. And finally, this is not so much from the county, but from my little district. On Saturday, Stuart Park is having cleanup day from 10 a.m. to noon. And yes, my word five buddies are nodding and you're all invited. I will be there. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks for coming, Veronica. I haven't given up on the city being involved in the GIV programs. Big opportunity. Problem is we're still under that. Steve Dooley doesn't think he's got time to do it.
I know our sheriff was interested, like, it sounds like he just wants to, he thinks it could be possible to make the implementation happen with just the sheriff's office resources and maybe with an avenue for IPD to join it later somehow. I don't have the details of how to do it.
We can certainly help this discussion.
You are.
Hello, thanks for coming. Good to see you. Always. I'd just like to know if you could send us more information about what you just mentioned about the guns, whatever. So I could understand that.
Yeah, definitely. There's a website I don't have on hand, but I will email it to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you once again for joining us. Next, we will see on the agenda a presentation of Employee Quarterly Recognition Award. Unfortunately, the recipient and the individual who nominated the recipient, neither of whom is here this evening. So we will hold recognition at Central Spirit Stadium in the Largo. So at this point, we will move to wonderfully then the one that is enjoyed every year by all of us. And that is the Pride of Ownership Awards. And tonight, the Pride of Ownership Awards is particularly special because the award is named for someone who contributed significantly to our community of that is Susan Blumenthal. So I would like to take a moment before turning it over to the Pride of Ownership Committee to read the City of Ithaca Proclamation. Whereas since arriving in Ithaca in 1970s, earned a master's degree in city and regional planning at Cornell, Susan Blumenthal turned her love of architecture to a decades-long career as a public servant to the City of Ithaca. Whereas Susan began her service in the city in 1984 as a member of the city's planning board, where she served for 11 years and eight years as chairman. Whereas in 1996, she was selected, was elected to council and elected person for the third ward, served in that role for eight years and also served as chair of PDC. Where she was instrumental in changing the dynamics of development in the city by her involvement in locating the farmer's market at Steenville Planning, urging Cornell to invest in downtown office space and coordinating the economic studies that led to the arrival of the Reach Out Stores on Route 13 in the Southwest. Whereas she helped to found the Tompkins County Mification Program to work through the program partners and utilities to increase aesthetic visual quality of Tompkins County natural and built landscapes while welcoming visitors and enhancing auto road for all residents. And whereas in 1997, with the support of both the city and the Rotary Club and the City of Ithaca County Council, she founded the Pride of Ownership Award. To recognize property owners who develop projects to take care of their property in ways that enhance the physical appearance of city neighborhoods and commercial areas. And whereas her passionate and steadfast leadership of the Pride of Ownership Committee in the decades to follow exemplified the highest levels of public and community commitment. And whereas in the ensuing years, approximately 150 properties have been recognized for their work to improve their vocal surroundings and thereby increase the quality of life for the city as a whole. Now, therefore, I will, our newest mayor of the City of Ithaca, hereby proclaim that the Pride of Ownership Awards shall be renamed to be the Susan Blumenthal Pride of Ownership Award. And I'm so pleased to present this. Having said that, many of us sitting around this table knew Susan. We can appreciate her many, many contributions to the city. And we will now turn the program over to the Pride of Ownership Committee to present this year's. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks for the recognition to Susan. I unbelievably to myself, I've served on the committee since the beginning for 26, 27 years. And Susan was extraordinary to work with, as many of you who work with her in this community. So I think the recognition is appropriate and tremendously well received by this committee. So we will start the 25th. This is the 25th, yes, right now.
Okay, Susan Blumenthal served on the city's planning board in the early 90s when the city started doing site plan review. She felt strongly that property owners and developers who went the extra mile with new projects and renovations of their property should receive recognition for their contribution. Blumenthal approached Don Comp, then president of the Rotary, when she was on common council and he agreed. Thus, the Rotary City Partnership was born in 1997, the first award was made in 1998. I've read this so many times, but.
I bet they would have memorized it.
With the committee. So committee, Frost Travis, developer, Travisite Properties, that's me, current chair. Scott Wyndham, Wyndham Planning and Design, sitting next to me. John Baratas, architect, who is responsible for the beautiful renders that you're going to see in just a moment. Brett Bossa, Executive Director, Alumni and Family Engagement, at the college. Margaret Harvey, Realtor and Historian, Power County Real Estate Services. Sponsors, of course, of the City of Ithaca and the Rotary of Ithaca. As I mentioned, illustrations of Adon Baras. Our first award.
Next slide. Will be better at signaling.
Is for the Tompkins County Chamber of Commerce at 124 Brindley Street. The new Tompkins Chamber headquarters is in part of the former Hanger Building for the Thomas Morris Aeroplane Factory, which in more recent years has been redeveloped into boutique, commercial and production space. And the chamber actually has its business after hours going on right now in the Center for History and Culture, where there is a Tommy plane, which was what the Thomas Morris Aeroplane Factory meant to be. The Aeroplane Factory complex was purchased by local businessmen, Renner Brows, Robert Sparks and Jerry Deets in 2019, and approvals granted in July 2020 for a new building and a 2,000 square foot addition of office space to the Hanger Building. Tompkins Chamber President and CEO Jennifer Cora said, "We are thrilled to have found in 124 Brindley Street a location that offers us unique space for our current team, but also allows for future growth. A space that offers us the storage and logistical access we need to service our operations, needs, our operation needs and stakeholders countywide. A space which offers outdoor recreation amenities and is located in the heart of an area of our community in transition. And a landlord like Jerry Deets who truly understands our mission and who has proven himself benevolent post to numerous community organizations." The choice of locations by Tompkins Chamber and Convention and Visitors Bureau, or CVB, was the result of a months-long search process, which was led by an ad hoc relocation committee that also included input from staff and the chamber's board of directors. Holds architects and warrant real estate, also consulted on the project, supporting the chamber and CVB in determining their space needs and core criteria for the next location, surveying the market, market park properties that surpass those criteria and narrowing the search to seven sites, which have shown this is the one that was ultimately selected. And I think it's a wonderful location around those growing waterfront.
I think we have Jennifer Cora's here that says they have the award. And then we hold that up maybe over here. Hold it up on the screen. Don't like post, post or mid Zoom COVID world.
The Mification Park still, so keep an eye on us. We're going to make it even nicer. Thank you.
All right, next slide, please. Our next slide is 701 Court Street, Lakeview Health Services, also known as West End Heights. I'll read the mission statement for Lakeview Health Services and then talk a little bit about the building. Lakeview Health Services is dedicated to helping those we serve identify and achieve personally meaningful life goals and to realize their full potential using person-centered, recovery-oriented and trauma-informed practices. We provide safe, affordable housing and support to persons with mental illness as well as healthcare coordination services to individuals with chronic mental and physical health challenges. We are committed to the highest level of fiscal responsibility to ensure the long-term sustainability of our organization and services. In response to homelessness and the need for safe, affordable and special needs housing in the City of Ithaca, West End Heights provides 61 bedroom apartments to a missed population of individuals with incomes between 50 to 60% of area median income. 38 units are available to those who have special needs, including those recovering from mental illness, illnesses or addiction, or are living with HIV AIDS. 22 units are available to the general community qualified for affordable housing. There are five ADA units, three mobility impaired and two for visually impaired or deaf or hearing impaired. The building is secured and staffed 24/7 and provides office space for staff, providing support services for residents with special needs. Also included are onsite laundry, a community room, outdoor patio with pergola and limited parking. In support of Ithaca's goal of 100% decarbonization of buildings, the project utilizes fossil-free HEAC systems for both apartment units and community spaces. The building also features enhanced wall assemblies, LED lighting, energy star appliances and EPA water sense plumbing fixtures. The building achieved a neat gold grade. They have already won several awards ahead of us. The American Institute of Architects of AIA New York State 2022 Excelsior Award of Merit. This award recognizes design excellence of publicly funded projects. West End Heights was one of nine projects chosen for the fastest date, including projects in New York City. U.S. Green Building Council 2022 Award for the Outstanding Affordable Housing Project. And AIA Rochester Award for Design Excellence. Last but not least, the City of Ithaca and Running Pride of Ownership Award. No one is here to receive the award, but I will be talking at the offices next week. So thank you. And now. Margaret Harvey will be up to present the next award.
Our next award is Melton Paint Center, 22 Cascadella Street. Melton's Paint Center has been serving central New York homeowners, painting contractors and designers since 1927. Based in Portland, Melton's developed a strong base of customers from Ithaca, especially after the closing of Ithaca Paint and Decorating. And a few years ago, owner Christopher Reed decided to add an Eiffel Tower. In May of 2021, he purchased the building in the form of Cascadella and North Meadow that had most recently housed Saucers and Tina, an Italian restaurant, and before that, Neo Ithaca. The location has excellent visibility and parking. Reed hired Ithaca architect Claudia Brenner to renovate the building to function as a paint store. The restaurant's second floor disappeared, as did the arches on Meadow Street. The interior is bright, spacious and packed with paint and supply. Brenner designed a striking facade in dark gray brick with light gray trim. All four sides of the building were painted, especially the east parking lot side, which features a new parapet and portico main entrance. Perhaps the most notable features of the building are the whimsical meshed paint cans signs of the main entrance on the southwest corner of the building. These were the brainchild of owner Christopher Reed. Architect Brenner put his ideas on paper and they were fabricated by metallogics of Ithaca. The cans may become the latest in a long line of Ithaca icons, fast and present, including the Shandicleer rooster, the dragonfly that sits atop the jewel box on the inlet, and T.V. Miller &amp; Sons Paper Company's gigantic yellow emerald, now sadly gone, and Flight's purple piano in the coverage also achieved. The next award is for the Black Diamond Trail Kiosk and Bicycle Repair Station in Gaspard. The Black Diamond Trail opened in 2016 and has become a popular choice for local and visiting hikers, runners and cyclists, even serving as a new way to commute between Ithaca and New Orleans. The trail follows the route of the old Lehigh Valley Railroad's Black Diamond Express and increases just 500 feet in elevation over its eight and a half mile course, sending from the biggest gas park to Duane and Falls State Park. In June 2022, the Finger Lakes Regional Office of New York State Parks for Creating a Distortment Prevention unveiled a new informational kiosk. unveiled a new informational kiosk at the foot of the trail at its intersection with the Kewell Waterfront Trail near the Ithaca Gardens Garden. The kiosk's metal roof and truss supports are reminiscent of small town railroad platforms, a reference to the trail routes in transportation history. The roof shelters interpretive panels, a bench and an ingenious bicycle repair taking with an air pump and tools. The site is further enhanced by a row of bicycle stands, landscaping and a simple memorial to Andres Ozelen's Cycling and Trail Airport that died in two thousand nineteen. The site was designed by Finger Lakes staff, Finger Lakes Park staff, Rob Ferguson, Architect, Leo Fry, Landscape Architect, now retired, and Max McKeon, Horticulturist. The project was funded in part by forty members of the Finger Lakes Cycling Club and the bike repair station was donated by U.S. Speed and Cyclery. The Friends of Stuart Park donated benches and bike racks and Procon Construction from Bestow was the primary contractor. And Director of New York State Parks, Finger Lakes Region, Fred Bond is here to accept the award.
Thank you, everybody, all of you fans of the Black Diamond Trail, City of Ithaca, Friends of Stuart Park, great community effort all the way around, welcome to the booth.
Next award is Ithaca Iron Works. The newest addition to the City of Ithaca's West End is the recently completed mixed-use urban infill project, Iron Works Ithaca, located at four thirty West St. Louis. The building offers one hundred and twenty-nine residential units. On the upper fourth floor is sitting above amenities, parking, commercial suites and commercial suites on ground. One of the most distinguishing elements of the building is the salvaging and restoration of the hundred and fifty-year-old brick facade on the corner of State and Florence. Iron Works Ithaca was designed by Ithaca native and Cornell alum Eric Holbert and his firm Eric Holbert Associates, ECA, headquartered in Washington, D.C. And the construction was led by Welliver based in nearby Montour Falls. Iron Works Ithaca offers its residents unique modern amenities with a historic industrial charm, paying homage to the city's former use, to the property's former uses of foundry and manufacturing, while addressing sustainability and housing goals. The design stitches together the new and the old seamlessly, weaving them into the vibrant and eclectic fabric of the West End neighborhood at Cold Home. The amenities were designed to enhance the residential experience and include a rooftop terrace with spectacular views of the city and Cornell, a spacious fitness area complete with a yoga studio, spa, bike storage, a coffee bar and a lounge with fireplace and a bed and kitchen. Additionally, Iron Works was constructed to achieve NYSERDA's Tier Three and Energy Efficiency Performance Level by utilizing a combination of clean heat, high-performance building systems and tight, tolerant air sealing. The developers and the project team have successfully developed this new residential community in a manner that enhances the West End neighborhood, reduces waste, increases efficiency, and all the while leveraging the skills of many talented people from both near and far. Project included ECA, Kidm Engineering, T.G. Miller, Kerwood Wolf Michaels, Welliver, Northwest Bank, Tompkins Insurance Agency, Ithaca Area Economic Development and the RNOT Realty team of Ian Hunter, Marissa Riley, Janet Wang, Matt Farina, Jeff Evans and Peter Dugo. And Jeff and Peter are here with us tonight to receive the award.
Before we get to the next award, I just wanted to thank the council firm memorializing students in Bloomington Hall tonight for this award. My dish has been being a great advocate for architecture and beautification in the community. I had a pleasure to work with her on one of her other passions, which was public art, and she was instrumental in the creation of the City of Ithaca Public Art Plan and the stewardship of that plan for many, many years, so. Her loss is palpable. Thank you for recognizing your legacy. The next winner is Odyssey Bookstore. Raised in Ithaca and an alum of Cornell, Laura Larson returned to her hometown in twenty nineteen to realize a lifelong dream of opening a bookstore. She found building partners, the owners of the historic property, your neighbor, at one fifteen West Green Street. Beautiful stone home in a transitional, federal Greek Revival style, has been in Ed and Dina Crossmore's family since nineteen eleven. It was built in eighteen thirty-seven by Mason Samuel Halliday and originally owned by Forrest Mack, who served as a village president. The upper floors of the building have served as the home of Crossmore Law Office for decades, but the lower level sat unoccupied, just waiting for Larson's vision to, as she puts it, create something which would be accessible, yet feel like it has always been there. Extensive interior renovations by Rocco Design Build, Emily Petrino of Firehouse Architecture and Jen Wright of ASU Design transformed the nineteenth century basement storage into an intimate twenty-first century retail space, complete with cozy reading nooks and innovative placement of glass to allow original architectural features to remain visible to new shoppers. Outside, the welcoming courtyard project was designed by Noah Demarest of Screen Collaborative. It features a stunning iron sign that was one of the final projects fabricated by logo blacksmith master Duran Van Doran before his recent retirement. The new entry, the lower level of the building, combines the contemporary ADA compliant rail with reclaimed stone pavers to create a subtle blend of new and old. Larson's hope is that Kevin Riley's stonework and the garden design and planting by Poplar Point Studios work together to make pedestrians along Green Street feel they're being drawn to do something special. Lighting and music installation by vendors of lava-integrated technologies provide an additional transition from city streetscape to an experiential retail oasis. Having successfully navigated opening a business in the midst of a global pandemic, Laura credits the success of the project for the creativity and pragmatism of her many collaborators. She says that she was fortunate to work with them all and is proud to be able to give such a beautiful building a new life and with Odyssey Bookstore, a way to welcome the community to see just how gorgeous it is. Laura is traveling the world right now, so she's not in town, but we'll accept this award for her and be sure it gets delivered to the shops soon.
The next award is North Campus Residential Expansion, the NCRE project. The first two years of the educational experience on campus are foundational to students' academic success, personal development and ability to build a cohesive community. The North Campus Residential Expansion, NCRE, project, supported by Student in Campus Life, will enable Cornell University to provide more intentional, consistent support during the most formative years of its student experience. Students should come to Cornell for its academic reputation, which they will experience inside the classroom, but they also choose Cornell because it is a residential campus, where they'll meet people from all over the world. The residential experience is fundamental to the success of the overall student experience. And with this in mind, NCRE will provide students with a solid foundation outside and inside of the classroom. The expansion is a seven hundred seventy-six thousand square foot student life residential complex for the first year in sophomore students. Providing over two thousand beds, the residents are organized as three- and five-story courtyard buildings that engage in response to the adjacent campus site conditions and help foster the serendipitous collegial exchanges that are crucial to student life. Central to this complex is a thousand-seat dining hall that offers a variety of micro restaurants to enhance the student life experience. Red and gray terracotta masonry walls complement the neighboring North Campus buildings by acting as a modern reinterpretation of the existing dorms. Residential lounges capture campus views, conserve as beacons and highly transparent ground floors promote outward social interaction with the entire community. Lake source cooling and rooftop focal apex assist in achieving legal certification. The five-year residents follow their names for alumni, Tony Morrison, M.A. nineteen fifty-five, Ruth Bader Ginsburg, fifty-four, Barbara McClintock, B.S. nineteen twenty-three, M.I. nineteen, M.A. nineteen twenty-five and D.H.C. nineteen twenty-seven, Hugh Shi, B.A. nineteen fourteen, and to honor the Ganadago Cubination. Morrison and Ganadago opened in the fall of twenty twenty-one and Shi and McClintock and Ginsburg opened in the fall of twenty twenty-two. I think we have Pat, Pat Winters here, Assistant Vice President for Student in Campus Life at Cornell.
Good to take this one up. At seven hundred thousand feet, we have two one drive. Thank you. We give these out at lunch as well for rotaries and then take them away. It's a little tricky if they get to bring them back. Lastly, I want to recognize the moral leading partnership of the City of Ithaca and Rotary Club and Mayor Lewis, who'd like to present this plaque that has all of the awardees on it and the hope that it will find its home in the city hall. And John Baratas has done these beautiful live drawings for years that are part of the award and that are on this as well, so. Thank God for all that.
Well, thank you to the committee and congratulations for all of the awards and the support within our community. That's not the morning beautiful for all of us to appreciate the evening. Thank you. All right, well, that is always such a wonderful event and committing so much time into reviewing applications for our recognition. We'll now move to the review and approval of minutes. The minutes that were provided to council include November second, twenty-two, November nine, twenty-two, December seven, twenty-two, and then March one, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve the minutes at the poll? Thank you for having me second. Tiffany, thank you so much. Any comments or questions?
I want to thank staff for putting the minutes together. They are going to be very interesting to get used to, but I appreciate the new format and my thinking of the report.
They all look around the table. Who didn't? Okay. Thank you. So is there a vote to approve these four sets of rules? All those in favor? And as we presented. Thank you. We'll now move on to public comment. And I will leave the part of those who have signed up to speak. I will remind speakers of the three-minute limit. And will also remind anyone speaking, addressing council, to do so in an orderly and respectful manner, no comments on individual persons. Again, just infer your respectful comments from those addressing the comments. And the first part I have is from Denise Exman. We will let you know when. Thank you. Good evening. I'm speaking to honor of National Public Health Week and everyone everywhere that was, that is and was impacted by traffic violence. My primary form of transportation is my bike. And I was really excited to find out that Schumer and, well Chuck Schumer and Kristen Gilliver got Ithaca over a hundred point, one point seven seems to be a proper number, one point seven million to fix these roads and a bunch of other stuff so that we can move forward and be a heck of a lot safer riding bikes, et cetera. So supporting the Better Bike Network needs to be a priority for the city because it is long overdue, creates safer streets, cleaner air. And Ithaca, I'm sorry, I'll jump over that. You don't know that too. And it's a positive trajectory. And finally, Ithaca will have the ability to be a New York State healthy transportation and safe streets leader and do it. Because if you truly care about public health, then it's a great trajectory to move forward. Thank you. Thank you, Denise. Next speaker I have is James Smith.
Hi, Jim Smith, paramedic. I know they had invited for some comments on reimagining public safety. It's hard. You want to embed five people with the police department. Tony can really define what the roles are. It's going to be hard to comment on that. The police and the paramedics have very well-defined legal roles. If you throw somebody in there that doesn't have a really well-defined job description, especially when it comes to medical control at the hospital, an extra voice could create more chaos. So you definitely need to decide what the qualifications are, what the job description is and how it's going to work and how it's going to impact all of us. My primary thing here is I came here about reimagining public safety. But the safety issue, I think, is the result of July fifteenth, twenty twenty. The fire. Okay, the fire chief at the time, Parsons, modified fire response. He eliminated fifty-three codes, which is hundreds of calls that the fire department's first responders would be responding to. One of them, for example, is they no longer respond to sickle cell crisis. That is, to me, if a parent's calling because their child is in sickle cell crisis, the closest responder should call. One of the other things that they, okay, they are not responding to some OBGYN things like trimester, second trimester hemorrhage and miscarriage, first trimester serious hemorrhage, a labor not imminent. I assume you all support women reproductive rights, but we're not doing too good a job on women reproductive emergency healthcare. The, we have a new fire chief. We're very well regarded. We need to have a public discussion of how we want to respond. The worst one is strokes. So one thing they're not responding to is loss of balance. That can be simple vertigo, but it could also be a stroke. That bank station can be empty. That's just a box. The ambulances respond to all over the county. If they're busy, it might be Truman'sburg or Dryden coming in. If it is coded not as a stroke and that person's living next to a fire station, then they have to wait thirty minutes for Truman'sburg to come in and identify it as a stroke. Whereas the fire department could come next door, give them oxygen, identify it right away. Thirty minutes is brain dying. This is your number one health issue. This is how we need to reimagine public safety. I know the speed limit, as the fire department says, you need to give them the support though. If they don't have the resources, I think they're overtaxed. I think.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your comment. But next is Ithaca, yes, so.
Hi, thank you. I'm Jacob Yosto. I am currently intern at Bike Block Tompkins. I am conducting the audit of all the bike parking in the city and the surrounding areas. So that basically means I'm not on a bike and I'm going to every location that has bike parking of any sort. That allowed over three hundred locations already, but then the more I have, the more I'm. Um, that allowed over three hundred locations already, which is more than a million. Um, so if you control some sort of bike parking, I have probably put my hands on it, give it a little shake to see what the quality is. See where it is in related in relation to other bike parking. And I've been pretty much up and down every single street in Ithaca, at least in the flatiron area so far. And I consider myself a very experienced rider, very comfortable on my bike, which is why it saddens me that I had a very near miss recently in the last few weeks at a place called the Oppos, which I'm sure you know this. Hanging out on the west side by Eve's Laundry. Um. It was thankfully the first of my kind. One of those near misses with a car who almost struck me as they were trying to make the right turn onto eighty nine. And I was able to avoid it, okay. Um, minus some disparity remarks from the driver, which I won't repeat here. Um, and it was a chance for me to really understand firsthand, unfortunately, I haven't had much experience with that, that a better bike network is needed for the city of Ithaca. And I support it in motion in order to grant funding to move forward with Better Bike Network. I've been working with Bike Walk Tompkins, where we try to do everything that I can to do my part to make sure that people are getting around safely on bike, walking, and also in cars as well. The potential for this to reduce car traffic, especially in those problem areas, uh is pretty good. Um, and I would also like to see more residents of the city be able to access all parts of the city. Um, I was actually coming back from doing a bike parking audit at West Hill when this happened, first time I've been out there. I see why people have problems with it. I see why they want to face it. So I'm here to voice my support for the only mention in five point one. That's nice.
Thank you. Next speaker is Margaret Johnson.
I live in different parts of the city. I'm at the Gans since nineteen eighty seven. Um, under your chair, Bike Walk Tompkins. And um that is a small nonprofit program that uh provides bicycling, outreach, and education in our communities. We run the Streets Alive Festival that you need to go to in the next year. And we offer bike skills clinics, donate and sell local bikes. And um we offer a place where you can hunt and picture bikes. Um, we are trying to also advocate for uh whole engine infrastructure that makes people feel safer. Um, not just in Ithaca, but in this environment area. Um, and we see the way of getting around excellent compliments to other notable um transit and car categories that are sustainable, maybe more sustainable than everyone popping in the old gears. Um, I'm here to speak in support of the one um on the transportation network. Um, and um I see this as um a tremendous step forward because it will provide funding budget for open year and studies of a conceptual plan for connected safe bicycling network. Um, but also a great deal of additional outreach uh about people's desires, needs, and questions about potential ways to overcome this. Um, so I just want to share with you a couple of pieces of information that you might not have. Um, in twenty twenty, um, there was a professional survey done of people working uh living within a five mile radius downtown about their bicycling. Um, and they cited as a tough barrier to their biking is that I would like accept that. Um, I feel unsafe in traffic. Um, and more than data at times said that there should be more better bike infrastructure on the street. Um, the survey also showed about four to five percent of responding to bike. And um so we know that even a marginal increase, a doubling of that, um could have a huge impact. Um, on emissions from transportation, on people's access and ability to get around, on reducing congestion and that really matters. In case you're tempted to think people don't like it, that is what it is. Um, for Ithaca Bike Share, one shares. Charity, we don't know which one you left. Um, we know people took that since last November, nearly sixteen thousand rides, which is about a hundred a day.
Margaret, thank you. That is a great minutes. Thank you for your attention. Thank you. And I will say if any speaker has um comments you would like to send, you can certainly do that in an email by a study and choose comment house. Uh, the next speaker is Sarah Krillas.
Hello, everyone. Um, my name is Sarah Krillas and I am a city resident of several years at this point. Um, I am speaking tonight to urge you all to take concrete action now on reimagining public safety. This process has been crawling along since twenty twenty with no end in sight for the discussions and back and forth on what should be done about the state of Ithaca. This is the unit. Yes, for many in the community are set in stone, however. We demand cutbacks on the number of officers armed with deadly weapons and to reallocate those funds to unarmed crisis responders, affordable housing, and mental health services. Data shows that when all people's needs are met, a community becomes safer for everyone. There needs to get an end to sending armed police to go out to calls and mobile crisis team, especially called for BIHOP folks. And instead, send more team members out with extensive training and provide funding for more supportive services that people actually ask for and need. Um, I work in housing justice and am a tenant myself and would like to have much more affordable quality housing. Um, for intensely resource strapped tenant market that we have here in the city of Ithaca. Um, I also deeply wish for a number of calls that would mitigate harm for somebody in crisis, not exacerbated for professionals and community members who look care and help with solutions, not violence. Um, as a city that claims to be progressive, we need to stop saying like paying lip service to the safety of black and brown community members and actually start protecting them. And yeah, that is what I have to say.
Thank you, Sarah.
Hello. Hi, Susan. I'm Ernest Fernando De Aragon, I'm the director of the Tompkins County Transportation Council. Um, here to support uh item five point one, the transportation network project. Uh, encourage the city to include the use of uh city funds, a little local share of this project. Uh, this project will utilize carbon reduction program funds that were included in the uh bike parks center for such a long. Uh, the this project has gone before the plan of the committees of the transportation council and they have approved uh their use uh for this project. This is a one time opportunity for the use of this fund. This fund will not, well, it may come around, but we don't know what's gonna happen to be seen. But for now, it's a uh that were included in the bill and they will, you know, they they are now available. We don't know if they'll be repeated at all. Uh. I think you'll, I'll try not to repeat what's been said already. Uh, basically, our plans, the Longreach Plan by agency, the city's uh plan Ithaca, that I think is a point of keep going back to it. Uh, it include uh language recognizing the importance of transportation to help meet the city goals and our community's goals. Uh, for uh carbon reduction and economic equities, uh and the roles of the transportation place and uh. And for this this project, fully support was close and that was included in the plans. The the potential for cycling is evidenced by the National Hospital Travel Survey on topics counting sixty percent of trips. All trips are 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 less than two miles in length. Over half of all trips are less than two miles in length. If we can capture just a fraction of those, we can go a long way in making uh our community uh much more livable and to really move the needle in uh uh in achieving our regular new goals, et cetera. Um, and. Last one, please. Uh, we, there is data also from the census identifying how low income households are more dependent on non automobile modes in order to fulfill the transportation needs. Uh, and at at this point, uh. Cycling is the least well accommodated mode. Uh, we have car share, we have bike share, we have good transit, we have a great uh legacy of uh sidewalk network that our forefathers and mothers gave us, right? Uh, but what is missing is the cycling infrastructure that will help people to really en masse take on that mode uh more effectively and more safely. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Monica Roth. I live in New City. I'm currently um the president of the Friends of the Farmers Market, a new organization that we formed a couple of years ago. And um I was so pleased to be here during the Pride of Ownership presentation because I feel like we have a lot of pride in our farmers market. And um I'm really excited that it's our fiftieth year we're celebrating. We started in nineteen seventy three um and have moved to Steemo Landing in nineteen eighty eight where we built the pavilion. We're hoping that we will move forward with some upgrades in the next few years and um continue to make this a world class market. We're known around the country and certainly one of the best markets in New York State. And uh we serve a large region. We have tons of visitors that come. We're one of the top tourism destinations in the county. Um, we probably have some weekends, five thousand people there. You can tell because of the cars. Um, and so we're we're happy to be making some improvements to hopefully improve traffic flow through the market and um. And uh have more people come and enjoy all the local product. We are certainly um known for being a totally local market. And we started, you know, with the rule that everything had to be made by the producer and that producer had to come from within thirty miles of Ithaca. And um so that rule has served us really well and has, we've probably had hundreds of businesses start. I really think the market is a a true incubator in our community, especially for very small businesses who otherwise might have a challenge starting in, you know, a retail outfit. Um, they can start in a community market and have a ready customer base to sell to test their product, expand. We have famous businesses like Yarmouth who started at the market, um like uh the flax business and um Ithaca hummus. And so many have spun off into a broader marketplace. We're very proud of that. So um I put a flyer on the table for everybody. We have a ceremonial ceremonial ribbon cutting coming up on May sixth from ten to eleven. It'll be short, not too many peaches, but I have asked Laura to attend. We have our um assembly and senate representatives coming as well. And we've invited some faces from the past um who have been instrumental in starting the market. So we're looking to have seen you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jordan Plemmons.
I'm Jordan Plemmons, Farmer Nonprofit Initiative, a grassroots neighborhood revitalization nonprofit addressing barriers to access, education, and equity on the west end of Ithaca. Uh, which houses the highest um number of uh people who are going to go on the threshold. I just wanna, you know, I have two points to make. Uh, no, one is uh the ask for release for the fifty thousand. Um, that was basically intended specifically is restricted contingency um in twenty twenty two budget. Um, I know that uh we had submitted the paperwork last, last time I was here, last month, that was stated that we had uh submitted our paperwork, you know, the paperwork in. But there hasn't been no final, it hasn't been finalized. So the MOU hasn't been finalized. I haven't had any um communication with um with the city of Ithaca or the approval for the SOW hasn't been approved formally. Uh, number two is uh, I think I believe I said last time that our childcare project recently was awarded by New York State. So we wanted a childcare desert plan and uh we are collaborating with um with the city of Ithaca to uh potentially place a wraparound childcare facility on the commons at on the second floor of Harold Square. Uh, and so we work with um the director of the enforce, the the code enforcer for the city of Ithaca. Um, and he's approved us to move forward to uh go through the site plan approval process and give him a bit for that. So the state will be visiting that site. We had did a walk through with the principal owner and we had been working with the CDC, the Child Child Development Council for two, two years on that project since twenty twenty. Um, so they all retired, but then we also have um, you know, new administration there. The other thing is uh. We, this year, you can just update you all, this year we will be submitting our strategic workforce development project to the state of New York. So we've been working with the state of New York since late twenty twenty on a strategic workforce development to address the workforce development issues in the state of New York, and I just hear locally. But we found out across the state of New York, there was a workforce issue and they wanted to take our our vision and then uh pretty much help us flush out a concept. So that's now um gonna be submitted. Uh, this year there was a program that was released. I obviously got firsthand knowledge when that program was rolled out. So we'll be submitting a um a proposal for that. And then also I've been working with the Home Renewal Agency. So we have a uh strategic housing project, affordable housing with community based supportive services and economic program. Um, and so uh that's all. I do my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. This morning, I got one of those siren messages. It said, um. City of Ithaca, emergency, please avoid the area of words. What's that, I thought? Or now, maybe? Or maybe come council. Of course, they uh ignore this message, hang it a little later. Um, but so I wanted to get to this question of too much money being spent on police overuse of police. And this is just a little incident that I know, you know, witnessed myself. It was one of those very slippery days. A month and more ago, I was walking up Set East San Ethan Street. Uh, by the way, there was a one of those siren warnings came out of the way of the area when, you know, I was walking. Um. And near Stewart Avenue, there was a police car. Up at any street, there was another police car. I think that's the whole patrol for the city. Uh. Both in both cases, apparently a car had gone out of control on a very slippery street. So what's wrong with the picture? Well, if DPW or much lower pay had been able to have adequate staffing, there might not have been those really slick streets that were causing accidents all over the place. Um, referring to the report, I tried to skim it and found one very puzzling place. Namely, it's a kind of flow chart of, you know, who had, you know, who has uh, you know, authority over whom. And the chart doesn't seem to match what the words say. I mean, there's this deputy. I mean, there's this deputy city manager kind of off to the side as though they didn't have any role in it when the words say that this is the person who's really in charge. So, I just, that's a question that I'm really asking. What did the chart maker mean? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tricia. Next speaker, Debbie Brand.
Hello. I am also here about the reimagining Public Safety Report, a report which recommends changing the name of the police department, hiring some unarmed officers, doing some more data collection, among a few other things. Same recommendations that I think we've been hearing for the third year of hearing now, that nothing's been done with. And I'm sure that there's some answer procedural parliamentary for how this report with these recommendations is different from the other several reports that have the same recommendations in them. But these aren't big logistical lifts. It shouldn't take three years to come up with your idea and like agree to do the idea. You should be implementing. And I also want to bring your attention around the fact that, like this executive order that you guys are executing came out from the governor at the time because police officers are brutalizing, killing, and disproportionately mass incarcerating black people in America, including in New York, including in Ithaca. We have our own laundry list of incidents, none of which, to any extent that I'm aware, have seen the officers dismissed from the department. And looking at the recommendations that are being considered here, like in the impetus of this executive order, the core question is, what are you going to do to make sure that this does not happen again? Not what are you going to do to have more data about it when it happens? Or have more liability assurance that the person went through X or Y training? What are you going to do to make sure that this does not happen again? And maybe the closest thing in here, because renaming the department and making some new supervisory jobs is not going to do that. Maybe sending some unarmed officers and reducing the number of situations where there's a distressed person and a guy with a gun is going to reduce this. But like, it's been three years and we're hearing the same recommendations. And so, my question is, like, do we have a problem around this? Like, what's the holdup? You guys are men, you all are running for reelection this year. Well, not all of you, some of you are retiring, but many of you are. There's going to be a lot of scrutiny on your records. It's going to be in the spotlight, what you're actually doing for one of the main legislative initiatives in the city. If there's a problem around this, it's going to be a headache for you guys. It's going to be a headache for us. We should get through it and get it done because these are not very intense recommendations. And there's a lot more work to do once these are implemented.
Apologies for mispronouncing.
Yes. My name is Kelly Winter, and I'm here to support the Better Bike Network. And finally, mentioning Better Running. I've been a commuter by bike for many religious secrets of the end of the basis. And my way to work, I live on West Hill. And I enforce this, we're close to the waterfront fails, so that people don't have waterfront fail. And often be some of my neighbors going to Cuba High School, which is where I work.
Can you speak up?
Yeah.
And just speak up.
Thank you. The reason I bike at times have been financial, the cars being shut. But mostly is because of the joy of being able to be a part of the community, being outside, feeling like I have time outside, fresh air, everything. And I'm grateful for the city in helping with the redesign in that area. Started working on every traffic home in the metro, so on Flora Avenue, which is the scariest part of my commute. I work at Cuba High School. Out there, I'm OT. And I work with many families who live in West Village apartments, Chestnut Hill area, Lower East Side. We struggle at times to give the kids to school or to their new school because of the fact, access to their own personal vehicles. My hope is, as I'm riding downhill past them or along them, that they will soon be able to realize that the bike, it can get all the way across. Particularly, there's a new bill for discussion with the state that allows $1,500 rebate for e-bikes, which could then carry kids and help mitigate some of the hills and the weather here. And addition to the drop bikes, which are also popping up more and more and will also allow them better access. As a mentor in the past with Bike Club Tompkins, as a running coach for the high school, and as a parent, and I've often advocated for others trying to take on this lifestyle, you know, aside for all the benefits that other people have mentioned. But then there are times when I question whether I should be asking people to do this. I wear an ID van on a regular basis that has emergency contacts in case I get hit. My daughter has started commuting on her own. And she also, it's a sad day to give her one of these to wear on her way to school. Two weeks ago, one of my runners was getting coming home from track practice. And she lives also in West Hill, but has been really solid in trying to, without any bike, climb our Elm Street. Fortunately, she was okay, but it scared everything that could have been and given to her past in a regular basis. So, I'm here again asking that you support the Better Bike Network for safety and for access provision.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kelly Spicer.
I love my voice so bad.
Okay, so, allergy time has hit and so, part of the lyme coughing. Kelly, do you want to send your comments to council? Great, thank you. And hope your voice returns. So, the next speaker is Sarah Ray.
Hello.
Hello. So, my name is Claire, and I live at 201 Elm Street with my partner, Paul Saydas. And I'm going to start with his suggestion that we acknowledge the land we are on as Cuba land. And also that we acknowledge that we're seconds and seconds closer to nuclear Armageddon every day on this beautiful planet that we live. And that seems to be appropriate as I am here to speak about reimagining public safety. And there is a correlation for me between the society that we live in. But the biggest thing we have to export is weapons from the little ones to the big ones, that there are trillions and trillions of dollars always available for war and weapons, while 15 million Americans have just been cut from Medicaid. That's the background of what we're dealing with, public safety. That has to be included. And while this governing body may not be specifically empowered to effect those bigger discussions, it's a collective conversation that we all have in this country. So, I'm grateful for Sarah and the recent speakers on public safety. Thank you. And I'm just going to address a tiny little part, which is about the traffic, the cameras for traffic, speeding and red lights. And so, this is, in Chicago, drivers living in Black and Latino neighborhoods receive twice as many traffic tickets as whites. This proportion jumped to three times during 2020. In 15 years, Black neighborhoods paid $500 million in penalties, vehicle impoundments, driver license suspension, and bankruptcies. Black and Latino drivers are more likely to experience traffic penalties as financially devastating, and they are more likely to incur late fees, big fees. In Rochester, city officials discontinued the traffic camera program in 2016 because the financial harms outweighed any safety benefits. Los Angeles discontinued its traffic camera program in 2011. Oh, my God. Houston, Rochester, Miami. I want to draw our attention to Vision Zero, which is an international effort for reducing pedestrian death by car. That they're, they don't use the word accident because they say it's about design. And I think that all of these things are about design. So, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
It's been a while. My name is Victoria Armstrong. I'm the co-founder and former director of Bike Club Tompkins. And I want to start by saying thank you for your service. This is not an easy job to have. And I was really worried when I walked in because there were so many people. And I thought, what the heck has happened? But it was really nice to see the Pride of Ownership boards. And I just felt thankful for being part of this community. So, thanks. I'm here, item 5.1. I just want to say, oh, yes, Aaron has done an incredible job. And the other thing I want to tell you is how I got here. So, I went out of my house over to Higgy's, where there's a hub of Ithaca Bike Share bikes, which is amazing, that they'll run by Bike Club Tompkins. So, I took it, went past my house up to Tioga Street and took Tioga Street all the way downtown to get here. It was wonderful. That's the Olive Garden, nice pavement. Speed humps that were around me were really, really respectful. And then I got to Seneca Street. How the heck do I go, right? Where do I go? So, I really, I used to bike on Seneca Street, and I don't do that anymore since I was crashed, had a crash with an automobile. So, I went on the Commons, and I know it's not allowed, but I went the speed of a pedestrian, and I went down the Commons. And then the last little section of the road that I might have taken was Paved Street. Forget that. So, I parked the bike share at another hub by the state border. And I came here and I walked up the stairs and I was happy to see everybody. So, Bike Club Tompkins, you may not know, was started with the New York State Department of Health. And I think it's good to look at health of individuals and community as part of the Better Biking for Everyone plan. You're giving the opportunity, the Department of Health money was there because they know that if somebody's in an environment that makes it easy to walk and bike, they'll do that. And their obesity at the time was 30% in our community. So, you want to give people the opportunity to do daily activities by biking or walking, and that helps for their health. So, anyways, you have the opportunity to go from concept to completion, from everybody approving tons of time and getting community input. So, the concept is fantastic. No one's going to happen, has to be studied. So, you have to give it money, and this is the opportunity. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Uchuma Lumbo Kusongo. And I will apologize for my poor pronunciation.
Thank you. My name is Uchuma Lumbo Kusongo. I work at Southside Community Centers. And I'm here to talk a bit about reimagining public safety. I don't have really much to add on top of what's been said, but I can tell you that in three years, I feel no more safe. I never called the police. I'm not going to name names because I'm trying to be respectful of the rules of this council meeting, but I've had several run-ins with police that made me realize, that made me know we could be able to, I feel, less safe. And I don't want any of my people, Black people, calling the police because they're not going to feel any safer. And so, we deal with the root causes of police brutality, the root causes of needs in this town, outreach. Yeah, where I work, we got food pantries, we have community outreach. And I'm not talking about barbecues with police, you know. Good public face, changing my name, not talking about that. I'm talking about actually getting to the root causes of crime, right? Needs, housing. I've talked about the sharing, the housing there. Things that can actually make a difference with people. That's what the funding needs to go and sees so many opportunities. I see many opportunities squandered and not talked about, not talked about again, again, and again. It's the same cycle. I think a lot of people are sitting. Thank you.
Margaret. Paul. Val. And then the next speaker is Dieter Cross.
This card is from IPB. I met this officer this morning. His name is Officer Brennan. I have a dent in my car. I showed up. He came out and he said he didn't believe where the dent came from. He then took pictures of me, pictures of my car. It was very startling. I became very alarmed. With that being said, I was just filing it with GEICO. What I began to realize in this moment is what I would feel like if I was not a white, short woman. I absolutely believe we need law enforcement in non-fans county. You cannot have a society without law enforcement, EMS, fire. But this was one of the worst days of my life. Right here, here's the case number. And I can't even believe it. Here's the most important thing. I reached out to Thomas Gonzella. I reached out to John Jolie. I reached out to other people. Nothing. I was like, this guy's saying I'm filing a false police report. Here I am, a small white woman. I have no criminal record. This might just be one of the worst days of my life. With that being said, their jobs are incredibly complex. They are so stressed. They didn't have enough officers to come. I tried to plan it where they would have enough officers to come. There weren't. And when this officer got here, yeah, this is, this is it. I don't even merit a card important enough, sitting here at this table, to have his own personal card. They took pictures of me. They took pictures of my car. We're going to investigate this. In that moment, I realized why the confusion and the fear is what it is. So, with that, I just wanted to come and tell you about my day. I absolutely unequivocally support IPB, Tompkins County Sheriff, and the troopers, as well as fire and EMS. But this is ridiculous. And then, when I got home shaking because of this man, I realized that if I wasn't a short, white woman, I'd probably not be sitting here right now. And that was a hard reality, and I just wanted to come here and say that. Once again, I unequivocally support our public services, but it was just a glimpse into what I will never see. And I feel bad about it.
Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker, we have a few speakers who are joining us virtually tonight. The first speaker is Maddie Albers.
Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, Maddie. Yes, we can hear you, Nettie.
Okay, thanks. So as others have said, it feels overdue for getting to the point in reimagining public safety for anything to actually change, including people having options to call for help that don't involve law enforcement. So I do hope that we see such changes soon. And that being said, talking with various folks around Ithaca this week, I found significant confusion about how some of the current recommendations relate to previous ones that have come before council. For example, the agenda item tonight talks about peer support specialists who can co respond with law enforcement. While the reported recommendations from last spring talked about community responders, which seemed like a civilian response that wasn't intertwined with police. So clarity on that would be super helpful. And I was reading recently about the Stanford Prison Experiment, which took people with similar identities to each other and it randomly assigned them to the role of either prisoner or guard. And even in a few days, people assigned to be guards quickly normalized and escalated their abusiveness and violence. So what, you know, part of what that illustrates to me is it's, we've been, we've inherited extremely toxic power dynamics that were born out of white supremacy and have a totally amoral set of expectations that are applied to one's social role around using force and control and you know, that system enables harmful and oppressive outcomes regardless of who is fulfilling the role of police. And yes, even here in Ithaca, as people have mentioned. So how to shift away from those roles is not an easy question, but the process should be free from police who have been socialized in that role, who hold excessive institutionalized power and benefit most from the way things are. Even without using guns or being armed, police designated in law enforcement roles still can and do cause a lot of trauma and harm. So co-response where they are present still carries those heightened risks. And committee members recently have suggested that a co-response model seemed better suited here in Ithaca than a model like Kahoots. But I would also love to hear more about how that decision was made. Executive Order two oh three and reimagining public safety has been supposed to center black and brown communities, people historically targeted by police violence. And whether it's the idea that specific officers in Ithaca with records of harming community members not be rehired or calls for shifting IPD funding to any number of directions people have named that promote safety or wanting support and safety options to call on that people can trust are independent from law enforcement. It seems like a lot of possibilities have so far been stifled, perhaps because of power that police have been granted in this process. So we do need civilian first responders. And I don't think that's adequately supported in any plans or budgets I've seen to date, given the data that we have on call volumes. So also, an accountability board training is great, but it falls short if they don't, if the only power they have is to make recommendations that might not go anywhere. So please start implementing real changes now and take steps in the future to both actually divest from the toxic and violent structures that we've all inherited and further invest in safety work led by communities of color in Ithaca. Thanks so much for listening.
Hello, Katie.
Katie.
Katie Nowrocky. Hello, Katie, can you hear us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Go ahead, please.
Okay, sorry about that. And so in twenty twenty in the summer, you, we all saw citizens of the city come out to demand the funding of the police and reallocation of those funds to programming that would meet the unmet need of our most vulnerable populations, black and brown folks in Ithaca. And it's been three years, as many speakers have already noted, and the city of Ithaca continues to fail to meet those requests. I am here tonight, once again, to advocate for the Unbroken Promise Initiative and ask for the release of the fifty thousand dollars from the twenty twenty-two budget that still remains in restricted contingency. We would like to use those funds for administration of the childcare desert grant we have been granted, as well as continuing our youth enrichment program. UPI is attempting to address the unmet needs of our most vulnerable communities, things that the city continues to not do. I'd like to echo the sentiments of everyone who has already spoken in regarding the reimagining public safety, as well as Jordan's comments. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. And the final speaker we have is Zachary Wynn. Hello, Zach, can you hear us? That you're muted. Zach, you're muted.
Hello, dear.
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I would like to know if the city will be participating in the Gun Involved Violence Intervention Program. The Gun Violence Elimination Initiative represents a meaningful effort to address gun violence in the community. Last night at the legislature, Councilperson McGonigal relayed that he was told by Acting Chief Jolie that the city would not be participating in the program due to low staffing levels at the department. If this is correct, it is a terrible justification for deciding to not participate in the effort. The New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services believes this community could benefit from the coordinated efforts of the Ithaca Police Department, District Attorney, Sheriff, and probation. Pardon me. I would common council convened this evening to consider voting to adopt recommendations related to reimagining public safety. When reimagining public safety is precisely the reason IPD is in a manpower crisis, as well as a recruiting crisis. Every time the city advances reimagining public safety without recognizing the harm and flaws of the process, it widens the gulf between the Ithaca Police Department and City Hall. I suggest tabling of the proposal until it leaves the conclusion of the ethics probe. The GIVE programs enhance probation includes job training and other strategies to help people become productive members of society with aspects of the plan closely resembling goals present in reimagining public safety. Tompkins County probation will lose out on over three hundred thousand dollars in grant funding alone, in addition to funds that could be used by the District Attorney, Office of the Sheriff's Department, and other county organizations. Without the city of Ithaca's participation, all of these potential services, sources, excuse me, of annual recurring revenue from the state will not be available to address gun violence. Turning down this funding means the city is not serious about gun violence. I asked Mayor Lewis, will the city be participating in the GIVE program? Whose decision is it? The Chief Jolie or yours? And to members of council, for the sake of your constituents and everyone who travels through the city, please do not let this opportunity pass. Speak out and oppose any effort to not join the GIVE initiative. Someone is going to get killed by a stray bullet inevitably. And additionally, for the city to fail to participate in this program, it would be to abandon its responsibility to the rest of the county to address gun violence. The city needs belief to function and Deputy Chief Monticello has made it clear that no amount of money, especially twenty thousand dollars, will draw officers to transfer into the Ithaca Police Department. The lateral transfer bonus should be raised to fifty thousand dollars to the first five officers who transfer into the department. Perhaps funds for this effort could come from the GIVE initiative. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Margaret, you have one more person who we need to get a printout for if you want it all.
Okay. Marie, the career, careers? All right, go ahead, please.
Good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak. I want to thank you for your time to, as you think about the public safety that works for the whole community. But my comments tonight are about supporting the matching funds for the federal reduction grant for the transportation network project. I live on West Hill and I have lived here on and off since eighty-eight, eighty-nine and have ridden my bike since that time. And I ride my bike to work every day and I love it. It's a wonderful time of the day. And it's lovely because I get to ride on the waterfront trail, which is just feels so safe and wonderful. My wife, who works at BJM, is interested in riding, but isn't interested in riding on the roads because she doesn't feel safe. My older son, and this is the photo of him when, ten years ago, he's now fourteen and a ninth grader at IHS, is starting to ride also at IHS, but he could also go on the waterfront trail. But it's not only my wife who's reluctant to ride on the roads due to the safety. This is the one thing that comes up time and again in surveys to City of Ithaca residents. There was a survey to parents of students in the school district a few years ago, and the main obstacles to having their kids ride on the streets was too much traffic and the cars driving too fast. This is repeated again and again, not only locally, but across the, in surveys across the nation. So we do have this chance right now to build on the plan, the Better Biking Plan that Bike Walk Tompkins has developed with this scoping project. And it will make a big difference. So I really encourage your support for this. And it works when you have increased infrastructure and people feel safe. It contributes to the increase in the number of people who will ride their bikes. People sometimes say, oh, this is Ithaca, it's cold and hilly. Well, Burlington, Vermont, a cold, hilly, small city has about three times more the people riding their bikes than we do here. We're slightly under two percent of people who commute to worker school and they have about six percent last I checked. But this isn't just about my family having more convenient places to bike. As many of you know, people with limited income, you rely on bikes for work, for school, much more than wealthier riders. And this is really about taking a step to meet our own City of Ithaca's transportation goals and setting up a system that works for everybody. It works for people who are young, too young, or old to drive, or who don't have the money to afford a car. Thank you.
Thank you. That is for a minute. Thank you for speaking. We'll now turn to colleagues for any response to the comments tonight. Robert.
Thank you to everyone who spoke this evening. I'll just respond to a couple of things very quickly. Thank you for the need to call and our neck and belly. Thank you to everyone spoke in favor of our bike network. Absolutely support that and appreciate your advocacy on that effort. The board, Mr. Smith, who came with a couple of comments about the modified fire response. I would just, I believe they left, but I encourage you to just raise the council so you can get a fuller sense of your comments. And then for the public safety thing, I'll sort of preserve my comments on that for what we discussed, the proposed resolution this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
So I'll start off by saying thank you so much to everyone who spoke, especially those who shared personal experiences. I would like to go on to say that the expanded bike lanes are vital, not only to reduce the head and some cars, not only because it's clearly a public safety issue, but also to lend the ear to a large amount of our community who would benefit from this year round from this funding. And also, more importantly, most importantly, to need to increase accessibility. For many, Ithaca's vital services, such as medical care, affordable groceries, aren't accessible other than by car. So because a lot of Ithacans, for many different reasons, don't have access to private automobiles, this is a vital step to achieve equality, especially until we can extend our public transportation systems for those already at the front lines of climate change. I also would like to applaud Bike Walk Tompkins for their work on this, especially the collaboration of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Yeah, I want to hit everybody who came to speak in favor of improving our bike network and for keeping a favor of public safety. Maybe I just want to break this board from comments made today. And do want to bring our attention to the mass loss advice that we had last week with the devastating mass shooting. It was very heartbreaking to see and it's increasingly frustrating that a very active inaction is happening at the federal level in regards to violence and mass shootings. And so I think we really need to use our voice as local officials and as community members to talk about how sensible gun ownership and gun reform regulations can exist usually. And we need to do more in that, as I said, there is consistent inaction by one specific group at the federal level is preventing all of our neighbors who have kids from living with safety and security when it comes to center. It's just one having to worry about mass death and mass shootings. It's a very solid problem. We're the only country that has significantly that out. And also, last week was a transitive visitor. And I want to bring attention to celebrate our trans community here in Ithaca and across the country, but also bring attention to the fact that, and I'm not being highfalled when I say this, that there is an active and ongoing attempt at genocide against the trans community in the United States. And that those of us who hold positions of power as elected officials have a responsibility to speak out against this and call it out and call out the perpetrators who, again, are not in here, are efficient, are American fascists who are constantly and actively identified against their community. And that we should use our platform and our power here to speak out against that. My great grandfather was an American who fought in World War II, Bon Dye, and fought for France, France, from fascism. He would be disgusted. He'd be fascist, walking around in our country. Recently, one of those fascists made a stop at New York City earlier this week, Representative Marjorie Schiller, great. And I think she got one welcome to books. We, how we can locate in our state. And I think, you know, we are very blessed that we have a very welcoming and secure community here in Ithaca that welcomes our queer friends, neighbors. But we can't take that for granted. We have to acknowledge the fact that it is very unsafe around us for a lot of our, for a lot of our neighbors. And it's a lot of the issues that we have in this, you know, this city here, whether it's obviously your housing, are disproportionately connected to the marginalized community of trans folks here. And so we really want to stand in solidarity with them and uplift them and protect them. We have to address those issues as well. I'm talking about homeless, housing, security, access to resources, et cetera. And so I want to use my position to uplift these concerns and my solidarity and I hope we all do the same.
Thank you. Other comments?
Anybody who want to go before me, because I'm busy and then first, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out, going to the comments, watching the award ceremony. That was just amazing and really nice. So congratulations to everybody that got an award. I'd like to speak about Jim, and I think he was from the Bike Department, and the calls that he was describing that have been taken off. I was really stuck about simple sound. All of them were pretty serious pieces. So I'd like, like you, to maybe get some more information about that, because that is a very concern. I don't know what he meant by reimagining health. Well, he was putting them together, I guess. Uh huh. And I just wanted to say that, you know, I was one of the original, I think they called me a few weeks later, but I started out with Bike Walk Tompkins, right? And I'm really excited about the work that they've done and the progress that they've made. And, you know, I have some, you know, concerns, you know, because when you're talking about coming from West Hill to go up to the Higa Heights with your children and, you know, talking about going to the store. So I'd rather see y'all get people cars, right? Find a way, how you get in the car so they can get around with their babies and up and down hills and byways. But I mean, and I hear the whole bike thing, but I can't get past, and I need help with, that we have more cold winter hard days than we have sunny days, right? But anyway, here we go. We do need the road safe for people who And we have sunny days, right? But anyway, here we go. We do need the road safe for people who are riding bikes, right? Um, and I, I'm just so proud of the law and watching the progress. However, I'm sitting here trying my best, you know, to um be settled. And to, you know, be gracious. Um, and uh, because I watch these movements and stuff happen. For other communities and people, and all the people I'm talking about in a flash. And look at what happens for us, us black and brown people. We still asking for a lot of those things. I don't know if one thing got anything to do with other, but after all, hey, you got me on a roll. I just can't, like, anything we talk about in this room, some way, some way. It affects black and brown people even worse. Like, I do, you know, like, I, I, when y'all making, I just, you know, and y'all make it happen. And it happens for y'all. It happens for y'all. I asked for a little bit of money for re- reparation. Anyway, I'm coming back for y'all with that one though. But what I do know, and I don't know if y'all hear me or know where I'm coming from, it's hard to sit here, right? I ain't going nowhere, but it's hard to sit here and watch all a lot of the issues that come up. And still think about where my people are. We still fighting struggling, scratching corn. I don't know if I'm even, yes, I am. I'm saying it because my ancestors have asked me to say this. Whenever y'all doing your work, remember us. Remember us. Uh, thank you. And thank you all very much for coming out. Like, it takes a lot. And and if you only know how good it feels when we look up and see y'all out there. Who come out on Wednesday night and you always here, right? But it feels so good to have y'all come out, you know, to see Jordan here over and over again, right? And he only asking for fifty thousand dollars, right? Like, wouldn't go home though. And this is what I'm talking about, like how these issues, like we so unaware of the way this dynamic work. Right? That we, we really are, well, we gotta do better, y'all. We gotta do better. And I know I'm going over my time. No, I don't have to. Also, I want to say, oh, thank you all really, really, very much for coming out and being here with us on Wednesday night. It's really appreciated. I don't know about the rest of them, but I love when I look out there at people feel. I don't, I get a little crabby when I see just the general people in the, you know, coming in. Okay, I like the joy. But thank you all for coming out and good night.
Other colleagues. George.
Alright, thank you. I'd like to uh congratulate Jordan on this idea for a child care grant. And uh, setting up a childcare center on the Commons in Herald Square. I think that's a great move. And when they get the building next door built, there's gonna be a lot of uh. Full income people there with, with children, I presume. And uh, so that, that's really exciting news. So thank you, Jordan. And to Jorge's point about gun violence. I agree. Uh, last night I was driving home from the county legislature. On uh, I live on West Hill. And as I got to the bridge. That goes to Hector Street, Florida Ave and Elm Street. There was five cop cars, just like a hundred yards from your house. There. And uh, there had been uh two cars at the bottom of the hill. Just coming off the bridge, I guess. And they're shooting at each other. Shots fired. This is the most. Busy intersection on West Hill. It's at the bottom of the hill from alternative school. Black, brown. Yellow. Whatever you want to imagine. People walk through that intersection all the time. Um, children walk through there all the time. Uh, this, we're not immune to this stuff. And um, frankly, I was glad police were there. I was glad they were there. Um, so I'll just leave that and uh, we'll talk about reimagining when we get to that. But I would encourage anybody in this room. To set up a rider lawn with I P D. And see if you have the same attitudes after that that you do now. Maybe you will, maybe you won't, but I'd like to know. I'd like to challenge you all to actually get to know some Ithaca police officers. And finally, uh, bikes. I support this. I support this. Um, it's dangerous to ride a bike in City of Ithaca, particularly on streets like Meadow Street. And uh, and State Street and just getting from West Hill to anywhere else in the city is scary. No question about it. Um, I will say that um, bike supporters are strongly united. And uh, I hope this money is also spent on pedestrian safety. Because there's a lot of people in the city who, you know, ride bikes. Um, so I hope this is spent on pedestrian safety as well. And just remind us that City of Ithaca is the county seat for a very rural county. A lot of the blue collar people who work in the City of Ithaca in Cornell live miles from Ithaca. They have to come to work every day. They live too far to ride the bikes to work. If you live in Spencer or Watkins or when you go over. Or um, so I hope this effort doesn't demonize. People who depend on their cars and, and unduly limit. Is a bad word, parking. Because from, we, we do need some parking in this town. Um, people shop here and work here and um, so I hope this is a balanced effort. And I think it will be because uh, Aaron is really good and um, I have confidence in Aaron. So, and that's all I'll say.
Thank you, George.
Yeah, no, I just had to explain, um, I was explaining again, it was like, what did you say? Four police cars out there?
Five.
Five?
Two were sheriff's cars and three were I P D.
Wow, I do. Well, that, this, this shortage problem, right? That was a lot of the beat out there. Um, and I'm, I'm really glad they were out there too. I think when I hear stuff like police shooting and that kind of stuff like that, we can't only look at that. We also gotta look at the cause, that deeper issue. What, what's creating that? Why are people acting out like that? Like, there's something else going on, right? Something else going on. Um, and also, I love the ride around with police officers, but I just want to say. Stand in the shadow of a mother who has a black and brown child. Can't do that one, can you? But just close your eyes for a moment and think of what it's like to know that your child is going out of their house. And you don't know if they'll return. Right? So it, 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 and you know, that ride around is real nice. This executive order two oh three was not about them. It was about the communities who feel unsafe. We know that we need to work together and want them, well, we asking y'all to come along with us. Because the executive order two oh three is, is right in the front here. And I, and I, and I, and I honor and thank my peers who did this work. But I, we gotta remember what this is about, right? All I gotta say is again, yes, take a ride with the police, right? But close your eyes at some moments in your life. And just picture what it must feel like for a black mother or father, aunt or uncle. Child has left their house. And you have to first sit down and have to talk with them. A talk that not too many other communities have to do. But when I sit up at night and look at my little grandson's face, my heart howl the things, right? So I did, I, I don't even know why I said that. Thank you, ancestors. But I just, I just need that out there.
Thank you, Ruby. Most said. Comments from other colleagues? Being none, we will move forward on our agenda. And that is to move in consent agenda. Is there a motion to move three point one through a three point one? Jorge, second, Robert, any comments or questions on consent agenda items? They're all in favor of approving consent agenda. And that passes ten zero. Thank you very much. Now turn it over to the City Administration Committee Chair, Ken Som.
Four point one, the evolution of the right to counsel and review of Law New York. Whereas on October third, July twenty one, the common council adopted a right to counsel revolution, including the following features. Attorney client directed equations to of city resident tenants in city court. Non attorney client advising and guidance for city resident tenants who contact Law New York seeking same. And a Law New York presence in city court generally wants to be persistent appearing in court. With non attorney client advising guidance and potential client intake as new Law New York clients. Whereas at the part of the twenty twenty two authorized budget, common council included a hundred and twenty five thousand of said program. And thereafter, on May four, twenty twenty two, authorized the use of said funds for said program. And whereas the current agreement between city and Law New York for funding an operation rate program expires on March thirty first, twenty twenty three. Where despite Law New York efforts, the substantial majority of said fund remain available at this time. And Law New York indicated a willingness to continue the program for a renewal period. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and his chair are hereby authorized to vote. To a renewal, a renewal term of this agreement, the unanimous agreement of the previous budget, a hundred twenty five thousand dollar for the program. And be a further resolved that the mayor, on the advice of the attorney, is hereby authorized to execute a renewal of the expired right council agreement with Law New York. Contrance substantially similar to those already in that agreement for a period, next April one, twenty twenty three. Including on March thirty first, twenty twenty four, so.
And uh, ducks in seconds. Comments or questions?
I'd like to congratulate the mayor for giving this signal and that. And it's been effective and it's good that we're not continuing.
Thank you. Warren.
Yeah, I'm reiterating that. And I think you have those figure for home in the state, you could vote in Law New York. Um, I think the board understand uh, you know, that's imbalance and uh, political power that is between. Um, landlords and the tenants. And so efforts like this help try to stabilize um, uh, that. Definitely feel bit by bit. And there's not more work to do, a lot more work, but there's another eight or seven. Thank you.
Any, any less comments, questions?
So, I mean, as a moving, we're going to spend, this is actually one of the minor collections that had significant problems recruiting. And I'm curious to see where anyone knows what status that is. And as I said, with the previous recruitment issues, we've ended your ability to, uh, to help try to be certain.
Uh, thank you. Good question. I'll, I'll respond it now. I'm trying to do, see if I can be, would that be very helpful in this regard? As has Keith McCafferty, the director of Law New York. He's been extremely helpful. This has been a really good partnership. It's my understanding that we have remaining of the one hundred and twenty five thousand dollars that were approved by council previously. We have approximately a hundred thousand dollars still. It's in that ballpark. We haven't received um, all the invoices yet. But uh, there's that amount. And it is not so much a, a problem of funding or, I'm sorry, of staffing. Although Law New York, like many organizations, has some of the, who staffed in short, it's good. But it has more to do with the emergency rental assistance program, the U R A P money. Uh, the application closed in January. Those who are in the process have to production stay. Uh, and some of those deadlines are now um, coming up. And, and so it really has a great deal to do with the programs that were put in place to help tenants. Uh, those programs concluding, but those who are in process still benefiting from it. And that's coming to a close. I don't know, Harry, if you have anything more to add?
Um, when you talk about U R A P, can you share that last week again? Because I know if you have been in before January, you still are protected. You said that's coming to a close.
Well, the applications closed in January, yes. But uh, if someone had applied prior to that deadline, they are still in process and they are protected. Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking.
Thank you, that has been my response. Any other comments, questions? How much in favor of four point one? Thank you. And that will second passes and clear out. Thank you very much. That's a very worthwhile program that has led us, led the members of our community. Four point two.
Four point two, release of funds for restricted contingency for the REAP project incorporated. Whereas as part of the twenty twenty three authorized city budget, common council put a hundred thousand dollars in restricted contingency funding for REAP project incorporated. And whereas, fund will be moved to support the continuation and expansion of medical services in the state reference. And outreach to medical services delivered to underserved, low income residents of Ithaca. Including a focus on sheltered and unsheltered homeless individuals and harm reduction, medical outreach services. Uh, to low income and homeless individuals to cover costs of clinical staff and administrative support expenses that cannot be reimbursed through billing and medical insurance. Now therefore be resolved that common council hereby releases one hundred thousand dollars from REAP's asset bank accounts. For the purpose of funding of the REAP project incorporated for twenty twenty three. I move the resolution through.
Thank you. One of the seconds. Questions? All right, all, I'm, I'm sorry. Well, just a minute. Thank you. Uh, was there some um determining factor that they met in order to achieve the release of contingency funds? Is there some program that is now in place, but this was in here on? The, the funds were approved by council. Steve, I don't know, you have any comment about uh? What information has been received by?
Yeah, I'm more here for the coming piece, but um.
Was it just merely the conversation of the amount you?
Yeah, exactly. Which I think within the pack, you're not really, yeah, we didn't, we didn't.
Okay, just wondering if there was something else. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. And Eddie?
Oh. My question is this, um, but I, I kind of figured it out afterwards. So this money is in this, so this is, this is not money coming from somewhere else. This money was already put aside, right? Because I was wondering, where's almost five hundred thousand, one hundred thousand, where's all this money coming from? But I realized what it is. When you say contingents, that means it's already been put aside.
It's been approved by council and it's been held in contingency until the necessary M U or documentation is is received. Similar to the right to council, that money is not new money. That's money that was already approved. So good question. Thank you. Any other questions, comments on the reach revolution? All those in favor? And that passes ten zero. Thank you very much. And all were there?
Yes. Uh, do the couple of lineups that only have lots of others, man. So, uh, we're still waiting for information from all of them. Uh, we know that the new state budget is delayed. Um, as I mentioned last month, uh, you know, our funding seems to be remaining the same. Um, and obviously, of course, if anything different than that kind of, I'll let you know, uh, it's going to be here for a while. The the budget has been passed. A couple of other things, uh, the C P I for twenty twenty three, uh, if anywhere with six percent. Um, for the year at six point two percent, so it's still continuing irrespective of downward trend. The one thing I wanted to mention, um, the C P I is important for many things. Uh, as I mentioned, I believe last month, but it is, uh, tied to the Cornell University M O U. Um, so I just wanted to update you on that. Related to twenty twenty two, we have an eight percent increase. Uh, so that means about a hundred nineteen thousand dollar increase in our M O U with Cornell. And so our M O U with Cornell now holds a million, six hundred and almost five thousand dollars, a million, six oh five. Um, but that's so, just so you know that the C P I is is tied to the M O U with Cornell. And lastly, sales tax continues to reflect early increases. Uh, roughly about twenty one percent ahead of our same period, uh, last of last year. So, uh, early returns are good, but those certainly can change in a long period. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions? Let's see it.
Hi, Brian. Steve, what what's going on with sales tax? Uh, it's up about twenty one percent so far.
Thank you, Steve.
I thought I didn't have a question, but Steve, um, it's sort of. If I recall what you were just talking about, that, uh, assessment of, you know, I know we talked about the budget last year. You were cautious about the larger like macroeconomic trends and the prospect of recession and things like that. I mean, could you just give us a sense of what your, um, your feelings are about the, you know, next quarter or two?
Uh, yeah, I am still very nervous about the economic situation, certainly. Um, it's, uh, you know, all the markets signals, many days are still signaling, uh, tough times ahead. So, uh, very cautious as we move, uh, throughout twenty twenty three for sure. Um, uh, and just keep our fingers crossed that it's better than than we think it might be, so. Yeah, and, uh, you know, continually the the costs, uh, for our operations, the city operations are. Definitely going up as a result of inflation across the board. Uh, and of course, um, labor costs, we've been very busy with negotiations, those costs have been increased as well. So a lot of factor, all those things, we we should want to explain, it'll be difficult for sure. Because revenues generally aren't keeping up, uh, the same pace all the same as that.
So even the delay budget, that'd be a good time to remind the governor's office that maybe we increase, uh, savings.
Got it. Uh, yeah, that would be great.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve.
Sure.
Eddie?
Oh, I'm sorry to interrupt you here. But one thing I forgot when when you honored these different holidays, we forgot about Ramadan. And exactly what's happening out in Palestine, being forced to stay inside, you know. So anyway, to our zone.
Thank you, Phoebe. Thank you. All right, well, now move to planning committee and I'll turn it over to Chair Aaron.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is, uh, item five point one. Authorization for matching fund for the federal carbon reduction grant for a transportation network project. And we're very excited desires to provide a multi multi mobile transportation. Infrastructure to its residents and visitors and whereas City of Ithaca through its green new deals fires to reduce. Other emissions originated from transportation sources. Understand that provisions of multi mobile transportation infrastructure result in a greater share of people walking, biking the city. Whereas the U S Department of Transportation through its bipartisan infrastructure bill. Established the carbon reduction program that's on certain categories of projects that have the effect of reducing carbon emissions. Whereas the city is if it good, whereas it is transportation metropolitan planning organization, it is. Tompkins County Transportation Center or I T C T C. Is responsible for distribution of four hundred and sixty three thousand, eight hundred and fifty five dollars of the carbon introduction program funding allotted to our state. Uh, to municipalities within Tompkins County. Whereas City of Ithaca expressed interest in utilizing the carbon reduction program funding. For instance above, uh, for a detailed block by block conceptual multimedia plan for six quarters. Identified by Bike Walk Tompkins in their Better Bike Network Plan. Um, through robust public outreach and whereas the other municipalities in county have submitted projects for consideration. For the carbon induction program funding and the Department of Transportation is supportive of using this funding source new project. Whereas and whereas the carbon reduction program funding can provide up to eighty percent of project cost, the required local match of minimum twenty percent. And where City of Ithaca engineering team received an estimate from a transportation engineering engineering planning company for a total project cost of. Five hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars, which would create a detailed. Block by block conceptual plan for a project and includes public outreach for all groups. And whereas the, uh, whereas since the carbon reduction program. Provides reimbursement funding, the city would provide funding for the full project and be reimbursed for four hundred and sixty three thousand, eight hundred and fifty five dollars. Therefore, the city's share of the project after the reimbursement would be one hundred and twenty three thousand, one hundred and forty five dollars. And then be it resolved that common council hereby agrees, the City of Ithaca will be responsible for the local match share of the project. At one hundred and twenty three thousand, one hundred and forty five dollars and I so.
Thank you. Seven seconds.
I'll note that Erin is here, who has been working on this project. I don't know if anyone else has here joined her.
It's interesting. Hi, everyone. Um, Zoom is working differently than usual and it didn't give, uh, me the ability to turn my camera on. It says that the host, um, would like you to speak. So, um, I don't have the ability to change that setting, but that's why my camera's off right now, but I'm here. Um, yeah, thank you for having me today. And, uh, I was recently at P E D C. Okay, thank you.
Hi, Erin.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for fixing that. Um, nice to be here with you all. Uh, I was recently at P E D C talking about this project, as you all know. And I had a great meeting there in March, um. About the project concept and we sort of evolved the project a little bit through that conversation. Um, with Phoebe and Cynthia and others at the P E D C meeting. So, um, I just wanted to, I'm sure you all read about the project. But the basic idea is that in the past, Bike Walk Tompkins, through a lot of public outreach. Created a conceptual. You know, idea for where bike routes would go, um, called the Better Bike Network. And they have a lot of details on their website about the different kinds of ways that you could change the streets to allow people to bike on them. But, um, what's missing is. Actually knowing like, for instance, how wide streets currently are and how you would have to actually change the streets. In order to get bicycle infrastructure to fit on the streets. And that's a hard problem that we need, um, you know, a consultant to help us with. So this project, uh, like we've heard, is for doing a block by block conceptual plan. And I'm saying block by block because I really want everybody to understand that the goal is to know exactly on every block. What we have to do in order to make the bike network happen? Do we have to move curb lines? Are any trees going to be impacted? Do we have to move, um, are there, uh, you know, a stormwater catch basins in the way? What what needs to be changed in order to make this bike network a reality? Um, once we have a detailed, really detailed plan like that. And part of this will to be will be to get, um, rough cost estimates for construction as well. Then we'll be in a really good position to request some of the very large, uh, federal grants that are, um, available to municipalities these days. So I'm really excited about this project. As you've heard, um, we have the ability to access over four hundred and sixty three thousand dollars. Four hundred and sixty three, eight hundred and fifty five of this federal carbon reduction program money. Um, that program does require a local match. And, um, so it requires a twenty percent local match. The. The project estimate I received requires us to pay a little bit more than twenty percent, but it's twenty. In the low twenties, um, percent local match. This isn't necessarily what the final project cost will be because we still have to go through a process of, um. Of advertising the project and hiring the consultant and scoping the details of the project and getting the real detailed cost estimate. Um, so we wouldn't be accepting any cost estimates more than five hundred eighty seven thousand, but it may well be less than that. Um, I wrote that it's a reimbursement grant and we don't have to have all the money at once. As a matter of fact, this project would be happening in two fiscal years, so we wouldn't even need to have half the money all at once. We would be paying for the consultant for the work that they do on a rolling basis. And then getting reimbursements also on a rolling basis. So it's not like we have to have a hundred and twenty three thousand, one hundred and forty five dollars sitting there just waiting for this. This is just another project that we will be doing reimbursements periodically. Um. I heard comments earlier, um, I believe George was talking about the. Really making sure that we include pedestrian infrastructure in this project. And that is one way that this. Is going to differ from, I think, the Bike Walk Tompkins concept. They had a very bike focused network design and. This will also certainly be a bike network, but at the same time that we're planning changes to. Blocks and intersections, we have the opportunity and we'll take advantage of that opportunity to make pedestrian improvements as well. And also, we can figure out ways to do traffic calming along these corridors too, as part of this project. So it's much more than just where are we going to strive by planes or what kind of bicycle infrastructure are we going to get? And that's why I've changed the name of it to Ithaca Active Transportation Network. Because it's really to support all the different kinds of active transportation and walking and wheeling. And all kinds of transportation is is part of that. So this is a wider project than what I think Bike Walk Tompkins had initially envisioned. But I think that's great because we have the ability to spend, um, a large amount of federal money on this and I I hope we we take advantage of it. Um, would anybody like to ask me any questions?
I think you provided, uh, sufficient information and certainly the cover memo that you provided for the planning committee. Also outlined all the information that's needed, but I will open it up. Does anyone have a question for Erin? George?
This is not a question. Erin, you're good at your job.
Thank you so much. Um, I did want to actually make one more comment, which is. Something that Cynthia brought up, um, in the last meeting. And that was about the West Hill being, um, not really well shown in the Bike Walk Tompkins plans. And I talked to Bike Walk Tompkins more about that after the fact and they were. The the network that they envisioned was probably a little bit easier than what I'm trying to do. They were looking at streets where people are already. Biking and where we could make easy changes. And in the future, those may well be the streets that we would re, you know, construct or re-strike first. But this project is more. Difficult than that and I want to actually try to come up with a plan for the best bike network we can do. And that will require moving some curves and that will require some more construction. Um, and that means that some areas of the city that it may have been difficult to include bike infrastructure on. Maybe we can do it and I'm thinking specifically of streets on West Hill. Um, so we're going to be doing a lot of public outreach, being sure to reach residents on West Hill and throughout the city. And then seeing where we can put routes that serve the whole city.
Thank you, Erin. Thanks very much.
Thanks.
Are we ready to vote? Hey, all those in.
A little clarity first.
Oh, sure. Sorry, I didn't really cut off any questions. Go ahead, Phoebe.
So you're asking for the city to pay for the whole thing of that?
No, um, the way that this works is that the city will need to pay. So when, after we hire a consultant to do the planning work. We will start making payments to them and we'll be making those payments, say, on a monthly basis or a quarterly basis. However, we schedule those payments, the city will be paying those payments. But then at the same time, I will be requesting reimbursement from. The Federal Highway Administration, I believe, is who's administering this. So actually, I don't even think I have to do that. I think I T C T C has this money. And so they'll be providing the money to us, but we don't have to ever have the entire project cost at one time.
Anyone else? All right, uh, vote now. All those in favor, five point one? And that passes ten zero. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Erin. Good to be here. Uh, well, now move to new business and, uh, resolution six point one. This is recognition for Ithaca Area Wastewater Treatment Facility Camden Contract Amendment Number Two. Whereas the Ithaca Area Wastewater Treatment Facility has been unable to obtain a qualified license for a chief plant operator. And is approaching critical personnel levels, we need short staffing. And whereas as the administrator representative of the Ithaca Area Wastewater Treatment Facility. The city, Ithaca contracted with the Camden Group. Operated on January seventh, twenty twenty two. Provide supplemental plant staffing, management and consulting services for a four A license. Chief operator position until June twenty twenty two. And whereas the Camden Group contract was subsequently amended, contract amendment number one. To carry coverage through June twenty twenty three for an additional amount of two hundred and sixty five thousand, eight hundred and eighteen hours. And whereas I A W W T F staff levels have continued to decrease and are now at critical level. And whereas the I A W W T F is desirous of expanding the Camden Group contract. To include the following modification as contract amendment number two. One, continue providing onsite managerial level staffing with the services of a four A licensed chief operator with an extended during. With an extended dur- duration through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. Two, provide additional experienced contract operations personnel. Three, reset the contract period aligned with the city's budget schedule. And whereas at its March twenty twenty-three meeting, the special joint committee of the IAWWTF. Recommended that its municipal partners expand the Camden contract. Now therefore be resolved that contract amendment number two with the Camden Group. Be approved for an amount not to exceed six hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred sixty dollars. For services covering the period of January one, twenty twenty-three. Through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three and be a further result. That funds necessary for said contract amendments be derived from the following sources. As determined by the city controller, two hundred sixty-six thousand dollars from the existing approved twenty twenty-three budget. One hundred thirty-nine thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars in unextended funds. From contract amendments number one and two hundred fifty thousand dollars, two hundred fifty thousand three forty-seven. From twenty twenty-three vacant transition personnel funds. And I will make this motion. I know there is one, um, proposed amendment. We also have. Oh, thank you. Uh, so we have Superintendent Thorne, who is, uh, with us this weekend and Mike did prepare. Cover memo that also lays out the essential information and the fact that. We are in dire need of immediate response to, uh, situation this. By all, uh, intents is to be a short-term solution to our funding buddy agreement to get us through twenty twenty-three. Uh, but, uh, before I turn it over to Superintendent Thorne, may I ask for a second? Vivian, thank you. And Cynthia, I believe you had.
Okay.
If the green light is on, you're on.
Oh, okay. Um. Yeah, so, uh, I think the, the resolution and the, the memo kind of explaining our situation. Uh, none of us anticipated that we would be in this spot. We've known that the chief was, uh, the past chief operator was going to retire last summer. Uh, and since July twenty twenty-one, we've been advertising for a chief operator position. Hopefully to work side by side with the retiring chief. Um, you know, just to get up to speed on the plant and how it operates. We were unable to do that, so we brought in the Camden Group originally. Uh, for what we thought would be a period of six months, just to provide a, uh, chief operator to work side by side. With our existing chief. And also to possibly, um. Help train a new chief, uh, Camden would have been sort of the transitional partner in, uh. In what we were anticipating. Uh, by the time the chief retired, uh, it last June. We realized that, uh, we still had no applicants for the position. And we extended the Camden Group to take on that chief's role for, uh, a whole year through. In June twenty twenty-three. In January, we. Again, we, we were hoping that we would be picking up people along the way and we haven't. So in January, three people, uh, retired from the plant, two of them are operators, one was an administrative, uh, coordinator. Out of the plant and following that, another operator resigned. And a fourth operator, uh, asked to go half-time. So we're really, really short on people. Uh, during that time, uh, just to the beginning of the year. Camden has put in more time than was anticipated in contract number one. There's been more equipment breaking down. They've had to fill in where the, uh. Uh, some of the unexpected vacancies. So what I'm trying to do with contract number two, um, or contract amendment number two. Seven block back to January first of this year. And just so we can get on, it's easier to explain, of course, on the, if we're talking and say, but it's. Um. And we would take any unused ones that were remaining in contract number one, just go ahead and apply those to contract number two. Uh, we've asked Camden to look for additional personnel because, uh, so far we're still. Not very successful in finding experienced operators out there at the plant. Um. And, uh. Uh, what else can I say about this? Um, we have, uh, over five big funded positions right now. That help pay for Camden's additional services. So this would be a cost-neutral, um, contract amendment. There would still be some money left over in case we are able to hire some, um, uh, city staff. We've had some success in getting some operator trainee applicants, we're reviewing those, but. We still need some experienced staff. We can't have operator trainees training and other operator training. So we're, we're gonna need Camden services, uh, certainly through the end of this year. Um. What we, what we've asked for is for Camden to find up to two people. To staff the plant. That doesn't necessarily mean we will. Get two people. I know Camden has one person that they're looking at right now and trying to make an offer. Um. And, um. And then we'll, we'll kind of wait and see, you know, if some of these operator trainees turn out and they're fast learners and stuff, maybe you don't need a second. Um, operator from Camden. On the other hand, we could lose another operator and really need that second operator from Camden. So I think this contract gives us, uh, quite a bit of flexibility and, um. That's, that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Well, I wonder if you, if you could please, um. Comment on, uh. Being short-staffed. To a critical level and. Uh, maybe some, some risk of permanent violations. I wonder if you can comment on that and. As I recall, you also had some conversations with the N C.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, right now, we're kind of a skeleton crew. We're operating the plant as it should be operated. But if somebody gets sick or somebody gets sick while another one's on vacation, we're really gonna be short-staffed on, uh, just. Monitoring the equipment. Uh, we have other operations that go on out there like, uh, bringing in truck waste. There's a lot of stamping needs to take place. Um, because the things are gonna get behind and, um. There's just more opportunity for, uh, discharge violations out there at the plant. I did contact, uh, or I had a conversation with the D E C about our shortage. And, uh, they say that this is, this is certainly a. A common problem with wastewater plants throughout New York State and also throughout the country. And, uh, finding licensed operators is becoming increasingly harder and harder, um, to do. And that more and more municipalities are doing exactly what we're doing. We're, we're reaching out to contractors to provide supplemental staff, um. And, um. There's, the D C maintains lists on their website. There's about forty-four companies in, that are registered with the D C in New York State. Providing services, um. Camden is one of those companies that, uh, operates generally here in central New York and they're, they're doing this. And the D E C also, uh, they're, they are considering requiring municipalities to come up with, um. For the name, but, uh. Operator, uh, Staffing Continency Plan, so. I got the name wrong, I'm sure, but, uh, because so many municipalities are facing these shortages. They want municipalities to be able to say, okay, if you can't find operators, then, you know, and, uh. They're, they're still working on that because it becomes such a widespread problem. Uh, certainly makes sense. So, um, we gotta be administrative questions.
Uh, thank you, my love. Um, yeah, definitely, definitely the staffing issue is a regional, uh, probably a nationwide issue. Um, one of the aspects that is, it's definitely relevant and, um. The S J C has put together a working group to try to examine long-term solutions. Towards management staffing issues, but one, one of the elements is the restrictions that we face within the current labor structure. That, uh, both the wastewater and water treatment plant face in terms of what we are allowed to, um, offer these. Uh, the salary positions, um, three point five of today's agenda, for example, speaks to similar challenges in, um, in the water treatment. So. I think this is, you know, as we look at our, our labor structures. Um, I know that the wastewater treatment plant needs to come up with different solutions because this is a problem that. The facility faces on a, on a regular, pretty regular basis. The fact is the city is, is turned into a training ground. We, we train staff. And then because of our wages, if we don't really pay pretty many wages for these technically, uh. Advanced positions, they immediately, uh, get hired away to other facilities. Um, I think we are paying, you know, between ten to, uh, forty thousand dollars. Uh, less than, uh, other facilities for the equal, um. Qualification than oftentimes they have, uh, less responsibilities than you put on one. So, um, this is a larger issue. This is definitely a short-term fix, um. But we need to do it because unlike other services, we cannot not treat wastewater. We must protect our lake, we must protect our community. We cannot not treat our drinking water. Those services have to continue, um, so I hope we can come up with some long-term solutions. Um, I do have, uh, two edits that I hope to make to the resolution. Um, just mainly for clarity, uh, and accuracy. The first is the last whereas. Um, just to delete that whereas because, uh, that did not actually occur. And then the second to last whereas is to say that the city is desirous of expanding Camden Group contract. Um. Because, um, facility is, uh, was. So those would be the two recommendations. Yeah, it's, it's, it's Ithaca Area Wastewater Treatment Facility. Which is, um, the human, so the city is desirous for everything system, the organization and the city wants to expand and we have in good contract. Thank you. Thank you.
Are the other members of the IAWWTF also there?
The S J C is the body that oversees the plant.
And, and it's more than just the city's base. Into it, right?
Yes, but actually city, under the, the special joint agreement, it's the city that oversees all staff. So the city actually entered into this contract, you know, latterly, um, last year.
Yeah, but George, uh, the S J C is well aware that this is what we're doing and, okay, yeah, they know that we're. Out of options here.
Got you. Thank you.
Eddie, I, I just was, um, thinking, um. Um, I hear what Cynthia is saying and, uh, you mentioned, you know, this is a problem everywhere. But I think another thing is a reality is many people are retiring. This, and, and I've heard at quite a few different meetings that, you know, oh. I heard it. Well, the people asleep, you're up now. No, I heard at, you know, at, uh, two of these different meetings that, uh, we've lost people to retirement. Not lost, they're staying, right, I mean, they've been around, um, and that, but that, that, that is the. Piece I'm thinking in my head, just thinking, like, do, during this time, do they have someone under them that they, they are preparing for? And I think you said they, yeah.
Yeah, we, we tried to do that. We set up the both water plant and wastewater plant with, uh. Uh, something, when I got here, it was, it, there was a chief and then there were a lot of operatives. And so what we tried to do is structure both plants and spread and, and sympathy condition. And all those senior operator positions so that there was, you know, more rungs on the ladder and, you know.
Oh, wow.
We had assistant chief, uh, we did have an assistant chief at the wastewater plant. Other reasons, uh, moved out west and, um, same time, you know. Realizing that we probably weren't going to replace that position and that we need Camden services. We just defined that one position, we, we were funding first, we had to be in this contract again.
Thank you, I'm just reading the notes, so, no, thank you, but I hate this. So I, I'm just thinking, uh, we have to do something for our community. This is a, a nationwide problem, but. Um, I, I, I'm. Maybe Lily gonna say this is the way it's supposed to be, what we have to do.
But, and maybe the other, um, well, the, one of the points you made is the need to look at succession planning. And that is something that organizational, like, we had a conversation, uh, just this week. I think it was with department heads about, uh, planning, succession planning in all departments. Uh, yes, because people will retire, people will also move, they will. Do one instance out west or to another, uh, area. So succession planning is really critical as we, uh, as we go forward. Do you have another comment to make?
I, I do wanna say that, um, I think everybody has been very impressed. Initiative with the Camden, Camden Group, the expertise and the, the, um, the management skills that they brought to the facility. Um, so I don't want in any way, um, not appreciate their good work. Um, but I definitely feel that we need to have long-term submissions. We need to have our staff remain in-house. And to have our, uh, municipal revenue go back to hiring, uh, individuals who live and work in the region. Um, you know, the bottom line is, this is coming at a cost and, um, the individuals who are. Coming in to serve at the wastewater unit, that they don't live here. So Camden is finding them apartments to rent in Ithaca so that they can come in from out of state and work here. Um, this is just not a long-term sustainable solution and I would like to see these municipal jobs. Go to individuals who live in the region. Yeah, and as I think was said, this is immediate and short-term solution. We will certainly be talking about, uh, longer-term solutions. Any other questions for my person?
Same version, let's see the mission of that version. But what is the current employment base, same contractors and.
Under the current contract, uh, Camden is providing a full-time, uh, essentially the chief out there. Um, but, uh, sort of the, the owner of the company has been sevying and wanting. Sad shortages. So what contract amendment number two will do, it's, it's in the memo. It will continue to fund the full-time, full-year, um. Be, I'm calling him the plant manager. We'll continue with the, the part-time services from the senior plant manager. The, the owner of the company, essentially, um, right now, uh. They are pursuing getting a full-time partial year, uh, plant maintenance manager. And that's, that's, um, that's the one that, uh, they're, they're ready to hire right now. Uh, the, the secondary position, that may be an optional position, depending how, how that's played out this, this year. Would also be, uh, full-time, partial year, um. They call it assistant plant manager. Every company has different titles for the jobs, but essentially another operator out there at the plant. Every company has different titles for the jobs, but essentially another operator out there at a plant. So even with these services, we're still going to be, you know, a skeleton crew. But one of the advantages with Camden is they can pull people from other plants if need be, so.
And if they, if they pull them, who pays them, Camden or us?
They, under the contract, we would pay a certain, a certain rate for a certain person, so.
Okay.
Maybe person A or person B, but as long as they're involved.
Any other questions, Mike, and elements? Ready to vote?
Laura, just a couple of points of clarification. Who did the initial motion on that? You did, okay. And Cynthia have changes she wanted to motion and that may be for the votes?
Yes, I moved Cynthia's seconded. We've had discussion, Mike has contributed. We have removed the whereas.
That and the second to the last whereas.
Yeah.
IAWTF and City.
City.
And then the last whereas can be
And I'm sending it to your paper right now, just so we have it. Okay, all those in favor? And that passes Camden. Thank you.
Very.
We now have appointments, thank you, Mike, for being here.
Thank you.
Uh, we now have appointments to the Sustainability Commission. I'll just remind my colleagues, this is a new commission at the moment. It will be the fifth commission and we're in the process of reconstituting all of our commitments. So this is giving us a good roadmap for, I don't know, you know, the event. The applicants, as you see, that are through this resolution have been interviewed by the Director of Planning and Development, Lisa Nivellis, as well as the Acting Director of Sustainability, Rebecca Adams. So I'm pleased that we have six members of the group and a chair of the Sustainability Commission. And these, we very much like to get them into a first meeting quite soon. So resolved, twenty six, Sustainability Commission, the founder Scott Doyle, be appointed for a two-year term to expire December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. The Christine O'Malley be appointed to a two-year term to expire December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. And that David Kane be appointed with a term ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. That was then around in the revised agenda. Then Iris Padment be appointed for a one-year term to expire December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. That Tanya Sonder be appointed for a one-year term to expire December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Then Alexander Travis be appointed to a one-year term to expire December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. And I will name that motion and hold for a second. Chris, thank you. Any comments or questions?
I have a question, I'm trying to remember. This commission is following the rules of the other commission. And so normally there would be more people, are there more appointments due in the future?
Yes, thank you.
Go out and commission?
Thank you, there will be nine members. So they, Lisa and Rebecca are still in the process of discussing and interviewing additional members. But yes, would follow the rules that we had in place for other, other missions.
And just to follow that includes the residency requirements too?
Yes.
Seven, six or seven, seven?
Yes, and right now, out of the six, four are city residents, two are non-residents. So definitely looking for city residents to meet any other members. I'm sorry, five, the third city resident.
I think it's
I'm sorry, it's, I think it's four.
Yes.
We've got that. But definitely of the two, only two are non-residents. Other comments, questions?
I would like to know the ethnicity background of these what are they? Progressioners, are they diverse?
Yes. Yes, and that was something that both Lisa and Rebecca paid special attention to.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other comment? That's all.
Yeah, exactly, it's our secondary and the commission has worked. I didn't think it's kind of weird that it will be the only commission that and so I know that, I believe that we should be heard and will actually is, is it going to start getting passed with reconstituting the commissions? And is that correct?
You are right, we will be, we collectively will be reconstituting the commissions. We don't have a finite, definite timeline. The bandwidth of city staff has been stretched tremendously. And by the way, I want to add, oh, welcome, she, she started in her role, our stewardess. So welcome, welcome to the first common council meeting. But to your point, Jackson, yes, there is every interest and it will be every effort to reconstitute the commission structure.
Verifying answer to this question, one of the members identifies as black. Okay, listen.
Thank you.
And, you know, as I said, that is something that is second, and Rebecca was saying. And there are still more members too, it's much more than one.
So all those in favor of six point two? And that passes ten zero. Okay, thank you very much. It will be great to get this, this mission started and to have that kind of help us start the other commissions that seven, but, um, I will turn to six point three and I'm turning it over to what would be
Four. Yeah. Yeah. Um, and thank you, Mayor. Um, two point three is approval of the report by the Special Committee for Public Safety. There will be a number of changes in this and I'll get to that in a moment. But first, I'd like to thank the fellow committee members. Um, David Brown, uh, Paul Simian, Rob and Tomo and Cynthia Rock, all, everybody contributed to this. Um, Rob and Cynthia in particular helped with the writing. Um, I'd like to thank Deb Mullinoff for helping, uh, with edits. And I'd also like to thank Shelley Michelle Non, who really helped keep my eyes on and why we started this in the first place. Um, so I thank you all.
And Travis and Watson.
Oh, true.
And all contributors.
Well, all the contributors.
Yeah.
Because we have a lot of people contributing, as well as just the committee members. Heather Dunbar and Travis Burson, and most of our names, Bruce Yan. Let's do that. Heather Candle, sorry. Scottish, good Scottish name, as in Dunbar. So with your permission, I'd like to read the whereas resolution as they came out of our committee. Because that's what we voted on. And then I'd like to point out the changes in the resolution. And then we vote on that and then go on to the need of the report, we're just making changes.
I believe, yes, what they need to do is read the resolution and written based on original report we wrote at the committee. Someone may then offer an amendment
Okay.
to that resolution. Uh, and then we can debate the resolution. The report itself is not a thing we have to line up on the floor. There is the, yeah, right now, extra emphasis on that. The report is not something we need to line up on the floor. Uh, the resolution is adopting the report, that's the kind of thing.
For sure, additionally, there's nothing to their advantage from moving the resolution as very large committee, but I wouldn't do the whole thing and then discussing it on the table. Actually, I have to read all of it.
So I don't have to decide what part I'm going to read.
You can move ahead or you can also read some excerpts.
All right, so, so one thing I'd like to keep in mind, this is a request to my colleagues, is that most of these changes are not that substantive. A lot of it's changing order and tightening up the language. Um, so I'm hoping that we can go on to the changes as a whole. Okay. I'll read part of this. Um, six point three, resolution adopting report of the Special Committee to Pakistan. Whereas following the murder of George Floyd, a Minneapolis Republican Officer Derek Shulman, inciting a long painful history in New York State of discrimination and discrimination of Black and African-American citizens. Then New York Governor Andrew Cuomo issued Executive Order two oh three, calling upon local governments to moderate police agencies to study their current operations and develop a plan to address the particular needs of a community disturbed by a special police agency and promote community engagement, foster trust, fairness and legitimacy, and to address any racial bias and disproportionate policing of communities of color. Um, several whereas, since I will leave them alone, go straight to the solves. So, Common Council adopts the report of the Special Committee for Public Safety and recommendations to the which are leaders as written. And now I will address the second person. Oh, okay.
Robert, thank you.
Okay, so here are the changes. Whereas is remaining the same. And the resolve um, changes the order of things. We have this fifty broke and change the ingredient. So resolve, the Common Council adopts the report of the Special Committee for Public Safety and its recommendations to establish a deputy city manager position to develop and codify holistic crisis response approach to oversee the implementation. To oversee the IPD, uh, co-response team, lead and RPS coordination to initiate a pilot program with IPD and to implement strategies to build relationship between officers and community organizations. To establish a team of peers before the specialists, who can correspond to law enforcement that appropriate for nonviolent calls for assistance, but not beyond the attorney of law enforcement with the role of providing a team of peers before specialists to correspond with law enforcement as appropriate and clear them as an alternative to a law enforcement only response to address behavioral health and other living crises. Conducting acceptance of the needs of the affected individuals and their families, managing oversight and immediate support plan for each impacted individual and their family, organizing and coordinating all information on applicable and available services and partner agencies to respond to the needs of the impacted individuals and their family, connecting individuals with appropriate services and follow-through until a handoff will fix the courses that can be confirmed. Managing the information on responses, personnel information of individuals and relevant data for reporting, providing aid to reduce dependence on, or divert away from law enforcement response systems work with the city's need team. And we've already mentioned establishing deputy city manager position. Only, I'll say the rest is as written, except strength accountability system through strength, is changed to strengthen accountability system through and the community police board, uh, functions were changed fairly significantly. I'll read, I'll read the number one, annual funding for members of CPB to receive law enforcement oversight training for the National Association of Pavilion Effect of Law Enforcement for the stand, hopefully to be similar peer organization approved by Common Council, no change there. Number two, update city policies as needed to require IPD chief for his or her designee, participation in community police board. And oh, excuse me, participation in community police board, meetings and oversight responsibilities, so thank you. And number three, Common Council, Common Council may make funding available for third-party investigations into police conduct and/or complex community generated complaints. And finally, establish, these aren't changed, establish standing committees of public safety and continue conversations, listening to background migrations on an ongoing basis. And reconstitute Public Safety Information Commission as a cognizant advisory board for proactive community discussion and feedback on public safety reform. And I would like to introduce changes.
That's right, I mean.
Definitely, everyone?
Yep.
Four thousand. That's good. Um, before I suggest the edits to the reported self for the public and for the people who are here, this effort was grounded in, um, the groups of people who were marginalized people who were interviewed and beginning of re-messaging process. And that is, you can find that in that.
I got it.
There is a report. There's one report. There. If you don't have to do the report, which would not be changed at all. We looked hard at the target and focus groups when interviews were conducted as we're beginning the process. And, um, those interviews and focus groups with marginalized minority individuals, Black, Brown, Asian, American Indians, Latinx and, um, people returning from incarceration, veterans, homeless individuals, LGBTQ, um, community members, personal insecurities um, and others. We looked very hard at what they had to say about public safety and re-messaging public safety. And that's what we based our, um, report. So. I will. Tell you all the changes we made between the time it came out committee. And after we had heard from the county, from the CJC. Um, who had some issues with whether or not. We were staying focused on city issues. And not getting too far into the weeds with the county responsibilities and the CJC responsibility, so. That was basically the changes, plus, um. Uh, that will not help. Improve my rating. Um, we changed the orders and things without really changing them. So, without further ado. I will point out the changes today. In the background section. We made no changes, it's fair, it's in the agenda. We need reduction. Uh, the only change we made was to add American Indians. Uh, to the relatively marginalized minority individuals. And quote, I will. I've been reading the last paragraph in the introduction. That this did not change in what's in the tag. These issues and others raised in these community focus groups and interview. Both by black and marginalized communities and by law enforcement officers as well. Way out with foundations that public safety reimagining came into the draft. Being treated fairly, with dignity and respect is a reasonable expectation for everyone. Keeping these old, individual front standard, these are our recommendations. So. In the eight recommendations. The first thing we did was reorder. The, the language. We started, um. Didn't change the first paragraph and the recommended actions, but we changed the order of. What came after was, we turned. Establishing a deputy city manager position into either number one. The head number two. Um, then we wanted to develop public safety for the past game. Third, maintain supportive change, new additions, like four, strengthening the community system. And five, create a view and a board instructions that enhance the return. That people feel they are being treated with dignity, fairness and respect. We follow the things so far. Um, I really appreciate the presentation. Um, action number one. Did not change. A, A did not change, B. We changed, this was something that, um, the county thought fairly strongly about. We got, we did not call it a crisis response team anymore, we're just calling it co-response team. That's kind of a placeholder really, um, the deputy city manager may have ideas about what they want to call this team. Or we may want to call it something later, but for now, we're calling it a co-response team. We're actually going to change the B. We didn't change the chart. Added.
Um, just because I think the time we, uh, there was some public comment questions about the vision, which we made. Oh, okay, and the narrative, I'll just note that the, the chart while it here is active and to be helpful. Is not the change, right, the changes of the full language that we have in the actual report.
And if I could fill up, uh, the, the question was, it looks like. So what the chart is trying to articulate is what is outlined in action one A. That the city manager is the civilian oversight over the city, including the police department. But we know that the city manager oversees everything. And so to have a person that's individually tasked with overseeing. Not only, uh, the police department, coordination with the non-city. Uh, organizations in the CBAC as well as the crisis response team along, uh, and making. That deputy city manager is the designate. Of the city manager, they have the power given to them by the city manager, and so that. This graph is meant to outline what is described in action one A. The deputy city manager is the civilian oversight, overseeing the coordination. Of public safety, not only the police department, the co-response team, lead. Coordination of CBAC, coordination of the D and is tasked with making sure all of these different functions work as well.
I think they want to be clear that. That this person, cause I think she said something about it's just a little on the side. That was the one, I didn't know what she said, but. Well, yeah, you know, with this one, this person here is not, I mean. Clarity is that this person will not be telling the police what to do. This person will, okay, let me live it along. Cause I think I understood a few more better, but this person would, uh, kind of. Don't have, don't like, is not ranked higher than the police.
It's not. Let me try to explain, let me try to explain. City manager is in charge of all departments. Um. The deputy city manager oversees.
Okay.
The police department, coordination with CJC and non-city organizations. And the, and the co-response team.
Yeah.
And lead. The deputy ci- city manager oversees all those things there, but. This, this police chief is still in charge of the police department. And including the budget, including hiring, um, he's. He or she is a full department head under this plan. And the name of the FIA police department is not changed. Will remain IPD. Um, so. But the deputy city manager oversees all these organizations. And worked directly with the co-response team at this point in time. Co-response team is running quite small. And, and their role is, is, um. Not fully, uh.
That's something.
Worked out.
Yeah.
So that's going to be a big part of the deputy city manager's job. Okay. Any other?
Yeah, yeah, um, so another comment earlier to the comments and also concern. About what happens when groups of people work together and sort of. The transition of culture. Um, in different form. The co-response team is separate from the police department, would be housed in a different apartment, I believe this part now. This is not a mental health response, that is being handled by the CJC and the county, that is the county person. So it's not a mental health crisis response team, but it is a team that would. Co-respond with law enforcement to nonviolent call types. And be that connection with victims and victims' families to help. Connect them as needed with services if they need it, whether or not it's social service, family services, to help assist them. And be that basically that warm handoff to follow up with them, how are things going, you know, are you connecting with the services you need? Uh, to try to address issues from, from that angle. So it's not cahoots, it's not a mental health response, that is something that, uh, the county. Is spirit, that is their jurisdiction. This is more sort of an individual personal connection and we look towards times when. There may be times when they can go on their own, there may be times that then. If the IPD doesn't need to be there, they would leave and those individuals would stay behind for help. So that's the vision for that team. And again, it will not be housed by the police department, it will be housed in a different department, I'm going to say. Mm-hmm. Robert.
Thanks, one, uh, just one last thing to add on that, we've also taken a note that was the question from the level. And he helped her, um, there, uh, while these positions are, you know, the, uh, end of action, um, uh, worked on by HR and everything. Um, as many of you will recall, we actually did put funding for three of these individuals in the budgets here.
Right, so let me continue. I found a couple other changes. Anywhere in our original grabbing to crisis co-response team, you can change that to simply co-respond. It's on. And actually one is on B again, and I changed. The last sentence in that paragraph. With, with all the IPD. Co-response team, lead, etc. I changed that to a little more feet on the street, instead of doing something around. I thought that should sound a little less. Yeah, 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 no, there. Um, and, and, you know, third, I can hear in samples. So. That may be the end of the changes. Oh, no, there isn't, there's one addition, an important addition. Can you find something?
Um, go down to the, you would need to resource section.
All of, all of those. There is an added sentence. In the initial sentence. Um, and actually two. Develop a pilot. Co-response team. There's an added. Paragraph. That's, and you got this in your packet. In your, in the changes packet. The deputy city manager will work in collaboration with the FIA police department to develop and initiate a pilot program. Utilizing our response to respond to nonviolent call concerns. Performance of the pilot program will be reviewed and evaluated to minimize the risk. To civilian first responders and police officers, while also protecting the rights and interests of victims. And considered for permanent input. Considered for permanent implementation as appropriate. Yes.
Um. So the intent of this action is also to address a comment that was just starting to, the, but. Um. Obviously, we have a union contract with, with our law enforcement officers. They have duties that they have conducted, um, consistently up until this point. Working with law enforcement to identify calls that, that can be responded to by people who are not police officers. We need to work collaboratively with our department in order to identify those call posts.
They have to work collaboratively with us.
Yes, exactly, and they, and, and this is part of that program, and of course, um. This fall under the deputy city manager who oversees all of this is they are charged with implementing this pilot program. Um, and the goal is to transition as feasible. Calls to non-police responders, um, in the future, and so this is the active, this is how you operationalize. This stuff that everyone is asking for, I, this is how we get there.
Okay, I'll, I'll turn your attention to the, um, you, police board section. And the part that we changed in the. The original resolution is, because it's changed in, in this final draft. The last paragraph before action four. That we all will probably recommend that IPD engage with the advocacy center of conference county to take advantage of their intensive training.
The next one, I would.
That's exactly important part of the before is, is hitting back. The training offered by advocacy centers. Addressing nonviolent, sexual assault, military crimes, and harmful domestic situations. Full participation in the CJC. C training programs addressing generalized generational trauma. Um, de-escalation, anti-race, anti-bias, and other, others required on an ongoing and not one-time basis. Um. I will say that. IPD has a lot of good training now, um, particularly with de-escalation. Um. The training involving. History of policing among black and brown people and generational trauma. Is something I don't know that they do now, and that is really important. Um, and so we, we're emphasizing that.
Are you all going to be adding the history of policing?
In your training, yes. Yes. Um, okay, back to. Back to.
There was some things prior. There are action. More of this action. Action one B had to be. These are changes that came up, um, at laws or hands, and is all, uh, also a public comment that was made at the community level. One of the public comments was, the, the item was. Building relationships with IPD officers and community members and increasing officer participation at, uh, community organization events. Only concern was. You know, we don't want to take away safe spaces for individuals in the community. And we wanted to reiterate that. There had been consistent requests among many organizations, GAC, SASE, LIPS, and vicious, we each others have police officers attend, um. And we wanted to facilitate that participation. So the, um, edited language will read under. Actually, I'm one B. Deputy city manager will develop strategies to build collaborative and supportive relationships between IPD officers and community members. One such example includes increasing officer participation in invited events and gatherings of community organizations. And then it goes on, and this is a reminder that actually, uh, was again, came out of, uh, a community request to have that. Clarification in the report.
That, that's a good point. Um, it was clear, listening to people in the community. That. They want. Uh, IPD to serve their communities and, um, not just come to like, uh, a barbecue once a year, but. Um, to show an interest in, in their communities and in their community, uh, organizations on an ongoing basis. Um, to get out of their cars. Um, to talk to people, just as. P P says, even when you're understaffed, you can still fly out people and say hello. And that's a big part of what we want. Um. It, you can't get away from the fact that. Um, in order to do good community policing. We can't be down fifteen officers. Um. We can't ignore community policing when we're understaffed, but we can do a much. But we can do a much better job when we have full intention of. Not just police, but also these correspondents. Last change that I know about. Is added to with community. On.
Page ten.
Yeah, there it is. Third actions for community oversight. And this within the, the changes made in the resolution at the beginning. I'll say it again. One, provide annual funding for members of the CPB. To receive law enforcement oversight training by the National Association for Pavilion Oversight of Law Enforcement. An organization recognized by both police and police advocates as well as law enforcement to protect them. For more privacy and accountability included review. Number two, update city policy that needed to require the IPD chief. Or his or her destiny, participation in CPB meetings and oversight responsibilities. Number three, county council may make funding available for third-party investigations into. Police conduct and or complex community generated complaints. Utilization of third-party investigations will provide assurances to the public that their review is fair and free of bias. And I would just say that for a couple of people who spoke. Um, this evening. They can file complaints with. Community Police Board. If if an officer, uh, isn't respectful or treats them in a unfair way. Um. They can make a complaint and it will be, I believe, is on the community police board and they do file complaints. Those are all the changes that I can see. And, um. The only real substantive ones are these with the community police board. The rest are mostly reordering, reordering and. And tightening up the language. So I will. Um. Move and accept these changes.
I would just ask, first of all, you say that I appreciate all the work, um, that the special committee is engaged in. It is a challenging topic, and yet it's a topic that many believe that we need to move ahead with. Uh, we need to move for. Implementing some of the changes that we have talked about for a very long time. Uh, I will ask that someone from the special committee make sure to, uh, share with Deputy Clerk. How do that can be on the city website of once we vote. Uh, of all of the changes that have been. Recommended and approved. Um. There's a lot of work that on that went into this. There were changes, uh, in process and changes tonight. So I just want to make sure that at the end of the day, once there is a vote. There is a complete document available to, uh, publish.
There was one additional change that has not yet been mentioned. The index was deleted of the request for the county. Because the index basically highlighted the seventeen, you're managing public safety initiatives that are underway by the CJC. Um, so to avoid confusion, it was removed from this. Yes, it was not included in the report that we received. I don't know if it was. That that ended. The past. Um, all right. Other comments or questions?
I'll say one more thing. The fact that this is kind of a toast dinner is my fault. Um. And I apologize for that. And I, I, uh, thank you for your patience. Um, this was good work. And the changes. Make the report significantly better. And, um. A lot of people's complaints tonight about how slow this process is going. Once we. Prove the support, we can get down to business. So I agree with you.
Thank you, George, and thank you for chairing the special committee. And thank you for working together with a number of council members, thanks to. And, uh, holders of this important mission. Okay, we're ready to vote.
Interesting.
I said this one thing before.
Well, this all may be, has to have standards.
Okay, my answer. Uh, just, um, just a comment. So, uh, I'm not being moved back to him tonight, so that he knows that the report doesn't quite match the rhetoric that came out of, you know, twenty twenty. And, uh, better words have been here since meeting of that. I share some of that, but. Uh, you know, still pretty quick of. And so in the past few years, a little perplexed. Um, not only additional information gathering and communication, but like to the state of the law, you know, in, I'm sure you can see. As we had it, and so, uh, the other thing that came up during our meetings too was frequent references to Rochester's. Time program which have evolved over the years. From, uh, to a place where everybody had. But, you know, we call them correspondents in this, in this report, but their painting goes out for on a number of calls. That started with only three call types and then expands to maybe one or two types. And that's, that's what we envision, um, the deputy chief of staff, Deputy City Manager, Public Safety. In identifying. And changing as we step up, uh, that, that, um, what that vision. Let's. So. All I have to say, um. This isn't like George and already saying this is definitely something which we can actually start doing stuff. It has been a long few years, but, um, I'm very hopeful that this will give us the direction, by the way. So actually, maybe use the money to raise that size. I mean, the bridge limits of this, I think. You know, we all agree, my side. Put the concrete steps forward and. So thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Well said, uh, TV and then.
TV? Yeah, um. I, well, I. So, um, there's another thing that Rochester has is this, um, it's reviewable. Um, and I think we've had it come here before. Years ago. And I think, uh, I'll, I think maybe boy, can we say a little bit because he's been talking about it, so.
I follow your point, um, but I don't need to belate this, but I have a follow-up point on how to go after.
Okay, I'll turn to around your heart and then Mark.
Uh, George, oh, one, right. You know, um, these are very interesting, which is kind of early board, and I specifically have, uh, amendment to the resolution. Um, with language relevance that not to the community review board section of, uh, the resolution. But to the obviously we've made, I, um, I start by, I was asking clarify that we're voting on the. Uh, changes right now and is not a final vote on, uh, on the resolution right now. Is that correct? Is my branch, as in you're voting on.
It's not correct?
Okay, we're voting on the friendly amendment. Okay.
So if he had amendment that he wants to run for, he can do it now too.
Yes, before we vote, we would not have taken a vote. So if you have a comment, that's why I was asking you.
Yes, and so, yeah, I wanted to refer vote to. Point, I believe it's twenty-four in the current, uh, rendition of the resolution. On the back established, uh, standing community policy when we have conversations with new policy. Celebration on an ongoing basis, um, and I want to ask some additional language that I, before I do so, I want to preface that when. Paul's work here is, um, not something to shun or all the existing review board. But that this is a public safety committee, um. Due to studying and exploration of the topic of Rochester, which is kind of early board. And the language I'm suggesting to, uh, to this is a point in the regulation is. Uh, the language is to include a subpoint of, uh, including the perception issues such as. Exploring the establishments of our communist civilian accountability board. And to assess and review the actions and procedures of the, uh, police department charged in the met season and adjudicating. Complaints of misconduct by IPD officers and that board shall have the powers to conduct independent investigations, the powers to use subpoenas. To the testimony and the production of evidence and the power to discipline IPD officers in the component of conduct is the same. That's why I would, uh, move that that be amended as, uh, as I voice it. And I want to reiterate and saying that this is, uh, the end of this, the public safety committee for, uh. Including those elements in our current, uh, review or accountability board, uh, as opposed to just having to rewrite what is already stated for our explicit review board.
Is that friendly to the board or any second there?
No.
No?
That's not easy. They have a volunteer board have the power to, uh. To, um. Uh, members of, uh, even in the Western city. Thanks on time.
This is a model that is in, in use, um, in Rochester, as it is right now. It would require us, that's why I'm proposing the public safety committee explore this because it requires probably to. Um, affect our, is it being contracted with P D or what have you. But it is, if we decide to go that route and we make the changes, it would be something that would be legal, which simply. There's a process, there's a breadth there for it in, uh, this college, especially Rochester.
Well, we do, we do have a city charter. And we would need to follow what it is currently in the state of inner city charter or obviously the charter contained. I have a little bit of concern about getting into the weeds on what the, um. The, uh, public safety committee. Maybe doing, and I wonder if you are, um, going into detail that it's better left to. That committee once it is established.
I do understand that, however, I do think that's a common issue that came up throughout the process and throughout the conversation throughout the comments. Has been. A trying to assert and and everything, a lot of civilian oversight and and accountability. For and sustain law enforcement, but also that, uh, as was mentioned, that we take a more proactive approach on how we deal with. Issues of misconduct or, uh, or or disband that we are trying to, to react to, as opposed to reactive. And so I think here, my opinion of prioritizing this, a company that's important, uh, we can go. And again, this not be defined this as something that we ought to do, that we explore the options, the possibilities for itself, but we. I think it's really important that we send a message to the community that we will take that very seriously. And it's again, if this, if this can be done, this is not something that will be feasible or something that is seen by to pursue, then that would be decision-making. But I do think it's important that we prioritize this in, uh, such, uh, language.
George. Brian, sure. I'm not sure if it has, um, my turn to go.
No, George, go ahead. Well, okay. I, I just want to talk about this conceivably because I'm not necessarily saying that the idea isn't worth exploring there. We're talking about ways that that can be explored without at quarter to ten. At night, adding a verbal, very complex amendment to a resolution. That is not friendly to the proposers. So if you want to move that and put it to a vote with this body, you can do that. But that's how this needs to work, you know? I'm a little nervous to do that kind of complexity and just wish that quarter to ten, I, we still have executive session and also. So, uh, yeah, and, and, you know, let's, let's also respect the work that our colleagues did. To put all this in writing in front of us so that we could manage. The complex changes that were being made to this. Complex may be a strong word because I think many of the drove this plane, we're not complex. But they were detailed for us to follow. That is not a respectable way to add. A complex idea verbally to this and expect us to be able to wrap to it now. So I'm hoping that we can figure that out. Respectfully here.
Let, let me just ask, did you have a comment? Did you have your?
Thank you. Well, all I was going to say was, um. I, I think given other comments or colleagues like reading actual reports section, that there's nothing limiting us from being, I know. I know great deal about this accountability board, having spoken with folks in Rochester, I will maintain that if this is engaging that work in the committee. Um, as it currently stands, if there are, if there are. To to Ross.
Um, I think. One of the things that. Strikes me is. You know, we are actually, you know, for a long time, we were one of the huge communities that actually had a civilian identity board. That, you know, we're very proud of that to, to be a leader in that way. Um. I have not of late, and when I say of late, I'm going to say the last four or five years. Heard complaints of community members saying that the CPB needs more oversight, it needs leader power, it needs to do. Um, these things that you're describing, I haven't. This hasn't been a concern that has come to council in the past demanding these changes. And so I'm wondering if this is a solution looking for a problem? Or is this something, like if there is a, a whole slew of incidents where the community is saying. We need more civilian oversight, our current system is not working, um, that would be one thing. But again, we've been meeting for several months, this process like we're doing on for years, and who's the person I'm hearing? That there is, there is a need for this expanded jurisdiction. And so I'm just wondering, um, okay, it's like, you know, is something broken here that needs to be fixed? Because if it is, this is what I'm hearing of it. Or is it, is this resolution? Um, partly related, you know, that getting the weeds on what, uh, um. Standing ready, uh. Would be looking.
TV. For one, thank you, Lloyd. Thank you very much. We often call something unfriendly. Right? Unfriendly, I think we are missing a really big point here. Why this executive order was put in place. I'm so sorry I was on this committee and not you. Cause I, we, we've never had a discussion about that, because that is truly something I could have wrong. Right? Because this is about black and brown people who've been killed in the streets. And also in the go. Unless y'all forgot. Right? So when we, when we go there, maybe this is not the right time to bring it up, but I get what you think. I hear what you're saying, what you're saying is that here's something that when a committee comes together. It's something else that we can bring to the table and talk about. Maybe it's not about amending this right now. Or when y'all sit here with a black woman sitting at the table who has got George Floyd vivid in my mind. Right about now, and you talk about something unfriendly? That kind of hurts. So I thank you for bringing this up. Maybe this is not the time because this, this committee has worked very hard on getting something out. Because they, they understand the urgency from the community who have not seen nothing come out of this yet, right? So that, I, you know, but I thank you. I think because we want something, we want, we want. Like Thusin just said. One thing the community talked a lot about, and I'm just kind of laid back and leaving it alone because I don't want to see this move one through. Or a lot of what people said is this is not. Compared to what they done got right here, and I pulled it up just to make sure. This here, this, this report. Right? You can't see it right now, it disappeared. But what I'm saying is that report that people came together, that focus groups? Those focus groups, y'all remember? They came together. But anyway, I'm I'm gonna let you go, but I thank you. And I do understand what this group is saying. And I'm 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 with it, but we'll do it later. We'll talk about. My question.
Same with Morgan, my time with us to be.
This is, that's not what you want me to finish. No, I'm not gonna let you finish if you want to mix words up. Nobody is saying this.
Private training.
I will also help in here and say that it's most vital.
Right.
While you will have to attend our meeting and we have additional business to do. I'm interested in moving forward to implement, to put into action the work of this committee and what we have wanted to be doing for a number of years. And as Erica said, we have set budgetary funding aside for this work and now it would be great to put our sums forward.
I have no objection to you bringing up this topic um in the future, but I do wish that you bring it up, that then you um and you said it good. That's why I I think for the addition to this.
Let let me just ask, have you you made a motion? And it is not viewed as friendly to those who moved and seconded promotion, so.
I didn't say anything, but.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did.
I I I didn't.
But we need to, we need to vote anyways. The question is uh whether you'd like to make a vote or.
That's fine. Okay, seconded. Oh, let's see, what was it seconded?
Yeah, what is that?
Anyway, I'm not even sure I heard it as a motion, but that was my point. Point is, there is a procedure for this. You have to bring this motion. It wasn't accepted as a friendly motion or change. So therefore, I mean, that's the that's the process. This is what we do. This is the procedure that we use to go through.
So, Jorge, I was gonna ask you, did you my thought was that we, did you want to formally make a motion or withdraw? And uh you had, what is represented?
To the stake of moving this along, I will withdraw.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
Yeah, I've got another question. So where besides the city, let's say, uh where are the standing committee roles defined? Whatever was the procedure too, when it just lets the two committees about any substantive description of what they do. But anyway, uh my question is worried about the fine and we'll put in that in the future. When talks of discussion.
I guess so. I had an answer to the question. Uh it's the mayor's power. So at present, the mayor working on some create safety committees, they don't enumerate themselves fully anywhere, starting in January with the mayor creating safety committees.
And there's no written, um, this committee is the, creating the charter, but no, the jurisdiction is set by the mayor.
And then the definition is not with it. Sorry. It is, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I think uh in a, I don't remember exactly which month, but some time before then, uh from roughly July, August kind of time frame last year, it came the chart for that third committee. But it was very basically one of the seven states that were explored.
Then yeah. Just a point of verification, um, family amendments typically like a non, it's not substantially different. So if it's considered consistent with the original amendment, that was, it's not meant to be unfriendly, it's just saying something that's consistent. It's it's a standard term of those procedure I believe you're talking about. Okay. Uh, I will ask for a vote. Are we ready to vote?
On the vote.
I'll give a search. Yeah, yeah. The resolution adopts the report. The report is then revised as soon as. All right. All those in favor of six point three as it has been amended on the floor. And that passes ten zero.
Right.
Did you vote? Okay. That passes ten zero. And clearly there is work to be done, but um my mind was able to start. And that's what this helps us with. Um. Are there any reports of special committees?
And we can also go to the STEM.
Oh, yes, yes, we are. Is there a motion for STEM? Or him?
Always with STEM.
Second. Got it. All of those in favor of extending meeting one hour. And that passes ten zero.
What if you said no? What if we all said no?
That would be inside of events.
So it would mean that we don't get city work done.
It is.
I would report.
We just gave one. All right. Where you have, are there special reports? Yes, go ahead, where.
Uh, I just want to report that uh the city and um firefighters and city and executives and city and uh P D O are currently in negotiations. Um, I could really vote negotiations and they're gonna be tougher than P D O, but they are, they are progressing and people are listening to each other.
They're all freezing this in that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have one for Southside. They got a lot going on. But if you have some time in Southside, they're doing a fun thing. They put together some really nice cards with a lot of good print, um, you know. Local, not local people, but yeah. Anyway, they have some cards that they have on sale. Uh also, they're doing a they got a lot of things coming up in the, in the meantime, I mean, in in the future, it was supposed to be meeting with the uh I P D. Actually, it's Friday, but it looks like it's not gonna happen because of the showings with them. Um, and so that, we're looking really forward to that. That's that's coming soon, no matter what, we're gonna be scheduled.
Thank you. Robert.
Give me a clarification. You said that's out of the, everybody dates that.
No, it's go in and buy a car in the internet.
Oh.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I have updates or just rather increase that so was I can a, uh, the first line is that um at least last year, uh, a city agency was filled, um, via this council by a president there, which was either Paul or Alex Smith. Um, said individual has not shown up for a meeting yet and wrote the city and next, so was I can be at not there, get in contact with this individual. And so I just wanted to flag this to the council and because uh significantly we have agents, there's very nobody to go on the duties. Um, as the first point, um, my second point is that there have been continued inquiries about um um, I definitely, um, we're mostly on the table and my three conversations that I at the beginning of this uh meeting many days ago, um, we uh, we were asked some updates in that regard. Um, but I'm just trying to invite that as a concern with the committee that we have, yes, more uh information on. Uh, and then lastly, specifically for you, I, I was requested to inquire about um a letter of non compliance, um, written, I believe, or brought to me by Rashipolo, um for uh the actual set committee, um, just to inquire if you got there or if there's any type of uh help you that.
Uh, I do have that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, those are my updates.
Thank you. Would you mind uh sending me a email about the member who has not?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other special committees? All right. Um, just a brief update on the S K C. I mentioned it briefly earlier that we have created a working room to look at um longer solutions for staffing and possible alternative management structures. Um, so this working room has now met a couple of times. We've been looking at the possibility of um even instructor as it is and perhaps transferring uh the labor to the plant to have the kind of bigger, be the employer. Um, one option is a full contract out of um s- staffing operations. Another option would be again, is the district. Another option that we are managing is the creation of a public benefit corporation. Um, so these are long-term options that goes not only that um sustainable staffing, but also um, ease of operations in terms of um oversight and approvals. Right now, every single time we need to do funding for emergency repairs, for example, it must be approved by all three municipalities in the area, two million pounds at thirty day commensurate requirement periods in case that can be very cumbersome and challenging in terms of um, operating with the plan. So Eddie, we're, we're looking at how to resolve this and talk. Um. Thank you. Thank you. Is there a report on safety?
There is not, thank you.
Thank you. Report um to get through me.
Uh, oh, yes, it is in the manual session.
Okay. Um, we will be holding an executive session. If there's an executive floor, could I have a motion, please, for moving into executive session to discuss ending the litigation? Uh, Roberts and Chris. All of those in favor? I love them. All those in favor who will get into executive session, that passes ten zero. That's nine zero. I will indicate that uh after this executive session, we will return to council chambers for a vote on the um I don't know, we will be discussing in executive session. I will also point out to council, that we will have a second executive session. So I just want you to let your be. Okay, so we will move to the second floor for the second session. Back in council chambers, back in sessions, so. But I want to make sure that we're recording.
Sure.
Okay. Could I have a motion to exit executive session? Whatever. That's in all those in favor of exiting executive session. That passes ten zero. Um. We have two resolutions. Can I ask someone? Uh, let me just move this in someone's second. Resolution authorizing approving settlement agreement to actions relating to the opioid crisis. Whereas the city has for some time, joined with many open municipalities, retaining outside counsel to represent the city's interest in recovering damages in the nationwide. Litigation pertaining to the opioid epidemic. And whereas that litigation has been against several defendants, including manufacturers of opioids, distributors of opioids. Chain pharmacies. And whereas the litigation alleges several causes of action against defendants. CBS, Walgreens and Walmart. Whereas New York State has opted to participate in settlements in which the city now has the opportunity to participate, claims against the foregoing defendants. And whereas it is in the best interest of the city to resolve the above referenced litigation without further litigation. Enter into the proposed settlement agreement as encouraged by outside counsel. As agreement shall settle all allegations against the defendants and avoid protracted litigation. Now, therefore, via result that the city attorney is hereby authorized to coordinate with outside counsel, Napoli, Spalnet, ELLC. To effectuate on behalf of the city participation agreements in the CBS, Walgreens and Walmart settlements. The applicable settlement sharing agreements and any necessary associated documents for said settlements. Yet further resolved that the city controller is authorized to accept the settlement funds. Further above described settlements in an estimated aggregate multi-year amount in excess of one hundred thousand dollars. And I will move and Robert seconds. All those in favor. And that passes ten. Ten zero. Okay, thank you very much. Second resolution. This is a resolution to authorize settlement in Bolins Excavating and Topsoil Inc. Versus City of Ithaca, index number E F T two zero two one dash zero six four five. Whereas Bolins Excavating and Topsoil Inc. was awarded a bid on, on or about September sixth, twenty nineteen. For the construction of a new fuel distribution facility. For the city and associated work, capital project seven nine nine. And whereas pursuant to the terms of the contract, the city assessed and withheld forty-four thousand two hundred dollars. In liquidated damages against Bolins as a result of the project's completion beyond the scheduled contract timeline. And whereas on or about September one, twenty twenty-one, Bolins filed an action in Tompkins County Supreme Court. Index number E F two zero two one dash zero six four five. Seeking one hundred forty thousand seven hundred and eight dollars and forty percent in damages. Whereas upon the recommendation of the city attorney, the city wishes to resolve the action without further litigation. Be it hereby resolved that the mayor, subject to the advice of the city attorney, is hereby authorized. Execute a settlement agreement with Bolins in form substantially similar to that included here with. Yet further resolved that the expenditure of an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars is authorized for settlement of the action. These funds are to be derived from account A, one nine three zero judgment and claims. And I saw move and Robert seconds. Any questions? All in favor? That passes ten zero. Okay, thank you very much. I will now ask for a motion to move to executive session. To discuss the employment history of a particular person. Robert moves. Rob seconds. All those in favor of moving into executive session. And that passes ten, ten zero. Okay, uh, we will, we will not be returning to council chambers with any voting item from this executive session.
Let me take this spell.
We can come back up.
Oh, we can come back up. Nothing's funny.
We don't have. We got a turn.
Well, we have adjourned.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.